Good afternoon. Let's call to order the called work session of April 8, 2021, City of Bristol, Tennessee. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Jane? Powers?
Here, sorry about that. Here, sorry.
Here. Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Power Robin?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask City Attorney Danielle Smith to discuss the necessity for conducting electronic meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the governor has allowed us to conduct meetings electronically versus meeting in person during the duration of the state of emergency that he's declared. At this point, that ability expires at the end of April, but we are still covered under the governor's emergency order at this point. In order to meet electronically, if there's anybody who is attending without video, you're asked to identify yourself by name and position before you speak so that the public can understand who's talking. At this point, it would be appropriate for council to discuss if necessary whether meeting electronically is appropriate in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. If no discussion is necessary, then you should proceed to a roll call vote as to whether meeting electronically is necessary.
Motion to approve meeting electronically to have presentations from nonprofits.
Second.
Tara, would you please call the roll?
Jane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Power Robin?
Yes.
On our agenda today is presentations from nonprofit organizations. And first to present would be the birthplace of country music. Leah?
Thank you. Okay. Is someone gonna? Share my PowerPoint?
Shane or Tim, you want to help her with that?
Yes, I'll get it here up.
Kim, you may have to come in here. I need you.
We will be able to control it, correct?
I think so.
Just one second. The file's corrupt.
Yeah, so Leah, if you're not sharing, if you're not the one sharing it, Tim will have to forward your slides.
Okay.
Kim, can you pull that up on your end? Kim Davis?
I can. I'm doing that right now.
I have my notes on there.
Yes, if you can pull it up and share it, it would be better because for some reason the file is corrupted.
Yeah, everybody has permission to share presentations. So if you have it on your computer, you can share it directly.
Okay. So Leah, I'm gonna share and you just say, and I'll just follow along, okay?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes. So it's got all my notes on there, you know. Sorry.
They shouldn't be able to see it. You're good.
Okay, okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Luttrell, Vice Mayor Turner, Councilwoman Margaret Power Robin, Kims Woman Lee Powers, Counseling King, and City Manager Bill Sora for allowing us to talk today. Okay. These are the things that we're going to cover in our presentation today. I won't read them, but that's what we're gonna cover. Okay? You're gonna get an overview of our request for $50,000 and how we think that BCM benefits the city of Bristol. We think that we really do help downtown growth and economic development. And one of the things that we hear all the time from business leaders that they set the museum and the festival as a key foundation for our growth in our downtown. And I believe you can, if you think about from when we opened the museum to everything that's going on in our downtown, we hope that we or and believe that we play a major role in that. Community, we think we give community heritage and education, pride to our community. One of the things that we're working on right now and considering these bullet points is we're currently, we got a grant to work with teachers and write lesson plans that fit in with their curriculum at school, especially in history. And so we're very excited that we've got teachers from Bristol, Tennessee, Ambroseville, Virginia, as well as some others in the region. And they're very excited to be able to introduce this programming to their school next year. Okay. We think that national and international visibility, we bring that, you know, when Kim Burns documentary came out, we were really on a high in our museum because the attendance was really going up. One of the things that was exciting for us, they have a passport for that and so you could go to the different spot. And Bristol is the first place on that passport that they urge people to come to. But another thing that I think that we have a play a role in is music industry, the professional interest in Bristol. And you'll see a name up there to start with Dallas Wayne. He's from Austin, Texas. And right as the pandemic hit, he moved to Bristol, Tennessee. He has two shows on Sirius XM. He's on Willie's Roadhouse and he's on Allyup Country every day. And if you listen to that, you're gonna hear him every day saying that he's coming to them live from Bristol, the birthplace of country music. We have recording studios down in our downtown, which is pretty phenomenal when you think about, even though our city's small and it's, we have those. The Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion was also named Rolling Stone Country Top Team Festival. And we think that's what helps our visitors come to us. Okay. So let's talk about the impacts that we had because of the pandemic. Even though we canceled the festival, we still had certain expenses that we incurred for the festival, such as we, you know, there's many things we still had to carry, our insurance and a lot of different things. We had to handle ticket refunds and deference. And you know, not only did it affect the birthplace of country music and Rhythm and Roots, it really meant it was a financial impact on our downtown businesses, impacts of tax revenues to the city. And then I think our community as a whole, it was a real downer for everyone. If you can see the impact of the festival, these are the tickets that we had sold during, before we announced. We had to refund, what you see in red, we refunded those for people who asked for that back. The total amount of people that deferred their tickets to this year, which means they're not gonna purchase tickets, they already have them. But we also did a festival hero campaign to try to lessen that blow. And we had some people that donated their ticket back. Other people just all in out gave us a cash donation. And so we were very fortunate there. The impact of the museum closure, if you're a travel, as you can see here, we haven't had any school groups, no group tours. But I will tell you that we have started booking group tours. We have about 10 on the books right now, starting later in the fall or early fall, that are coming to the thing. But one of the things, Tracy Childress, who handles our tour groups, we got a thing that the American Bus Association, which is one of our most popular tour bus operator conferences that we go to, wasn't gonna have it in person, but they were gonna have a virtual. But there wouldn't be any appointments with tour operators, okay? But you still had to pay to attend that was like half of it. So we decided we raised you through and we did it. And about a month ago, they came back and they said, hey, we heard so many things from our tour operators that we're gonna open it up for virtual meetings. And we have about 30 many meetings lined up with tour operators. And I believe that's in May of this year. Not only does it help our, affect our tour groups, we couldn't have any live event. And that means a decrease in our store sales, facility rental, and museum visitation. And I'm gonna show you a slide that you can see the difference in where we were. In 2015, we were seeing around 23,000 people in our museum as compared to 2019. We had a little over 34,000 visitors. And then if you look at 2020 with the pandemic, you see how that really decreased. And so if you look at this next slide, you're gonna see, if you look at that same time period from June of 2019 to December 31st, 2019, we had almost 25,000 visitors. And this last year, it was right at 7,000. So that's a 72% decrease in that same time period. How did we respond to the pandemic? And reopening, once we had to shut our doors, we thought we have to stay connected with the people who are interested in the museum and all that we did. So we created 15 behind the scenes videos that we posted on our social media. We created activity pages because, you know, students were at home doing things or parents were there trying to do that. So we created activity sheets for them to print off and do at home. And it was a fun way for them to connect with the museum while it was closed down. We also started a book club, a radio Bristol Book Club that's on the radio every month. We've partnered with Bristol Public Library, and that's been pretty popular because it's not only online, it's on our terrestrial station also. We did some virtual programming with, we had just opened up a special exhibit when we had to close down. And it wasn't here very long after we reopened. So we created behind the scenes look at the real folks special exhibit. And teachers did share it with their students. We also did some things for Rhythm and Roots. We had a call out to artists to send us in videos. And we posted them up on our Facebook and we did a golf cart karaoke. And one of the things that this does for us, you're not only posted it on yours, but those artists are also sharing that. We got some educational support. Smithsonian sent us some free education guides that we distributed to the people that you see there. We did exhibit tours for students, giving them behind the scene, look at our core exhibits. Okay. And then one of the things that we're pretty proud of, we went through a program with the Tennessee Chamber to get a healthy business certification. Baylor Hall, who is their operations manager, went through it. So she went through it and they tell you all the things that you have to do to get that certification. We had already written a plan for what we were gonna do when we reopen. And we submitted it to them to see if that met the requirement. And it did. And so we did get a healthy business certification from the state of Tennessee. So it came festival time. So what are we gonna do? Because people are so bummed out that it's not gonna be there. So we worked really hard to find just some sponsors. And if you can see those, those people helped us pull off a virtual weekend. We had, we had two different nights of music. And we also did our Super Raffle online on Sunday. And people watched that from the beginning to the end. But our total viewership on that was 75,820. One of the things that was kind of exciting for us, we were watching, because we always watch social media. And there were people that were sending up big screens in their backyard and watching the music. They watched the raffle. So it was exciting to us that we did bring some joy and created some interest in all that we're doing. How do we do during a pandemic? Fundraising wise, no, organization wise, we had a $1.2 million revenue lost due to the pandemic. However, this was set by SBA funding, COVID, some COVID relief grants, our festival hero program that I talked to you about for the festival where we got over $91,000. And then sponsorships for our virtual weekend. And then we had some increase in our individual giving to the museum, but we also retained $91,000 in festival sponsorship that people had already committed to us before we closed. And then, so that total totaled over $675,000. What are our programs and goals? We're gonna go over these as far as our program and goals go for 2021. Our museum programs, we will host three different special exhibits during this time period. We hope to increase school groups and educational outreach. We're working really hard on that. And that we think those lesson plans are really gonna help with that. We hope that we get to see the return of school groups in the coming year. And we want to return our 2019 attendance number to capitalize on the Kim Burns effect. Kim? You know, if you look at, he said, what he said there, it's very exciting. The thing that we believe is that we believe that lightning can strike again as Bristol grows and becomes not only a destination, but like the sun says, a good place to live, because we're seeing people move here every day. What are our festival updates and goals? As you can see right there, those are some of our goals that we have this year. But one of the things that we're, we have certain goals for tickets, or Kim does. But when we announced our lineup last weekend, we received coverage by Rolling Stone. We got an article in American Songwriter, The Boot, Yahoo, Blue Ridge Outdoors, Taste Magazine. And I don't know if anybody looks at the Roanoke Times, but they put a big spread in there about us. We were interviewed by WBR, WBR, Art and Abnormality, and we got a lot of local coverage. And that's just the sampling of all the coverage that we got once we made that announcement. Okay. What are our radio plans? As you can see there, one of the things that we hope What are our radio plans? As you can see there, uh, one of the things that we hope that will happen with the FCC this year is that they are going to open, uh, open up a window to apply for, uh, sing, signal expansion. And we have received a grant to help us get that because it's pretty etcetera, pretty expensive. But we hope to return Farm and Fun Time, which is our, uh, uh, program that we do at the museum. Uh, and we've also been talking with Tennessee High School, for example. Uh, we think that there's a time that we're going to outgrow that, uh, the museum. Not that we would move every single one of those, but that seems like a perfect place for us to move Farm and Fun Time. When we get to that, I think, I know, I don't know if you noticed, but Farm and Fun Time has a registered trademark. And we applied for that trademark about a year ago and about two months ago, we did receive that. So no one else can use that name. Of importance to, I think the city and all of us is that this Farm and Fun Time is now on PBS. Those are the stations that we are on currently. Before the pandemic hit, where we were very close to getting on Kentucky PBS and West Virginia PBS. So, um, we think that once we start our programming back up etcetera, that we will see that number increase. Our goal is to be nationwide within the next few years. These are our marketing and tourism strategy. If you look at museum promotion, these are the art, the areas that we really target because that's where we see most of our people coming to. It's a short drive, even if you look at, at Washington C and Nashville. When I talked about Dallas Wayne, uh, he told me the reason he moved to Bristol was because we were the birthplace of country music. But the other thing is he does close to 300 shows a year when he, when it's not pandemic. And he can get to almost anywhere he wants to travel to in less than a day's time, where it would take him a day's time to get to, uh, DC. Those are the type of advertising that we'll be doing. And we have recently launched a national and public relation campaign. And we're seeing great results in that. So I, I think we'll get a lot more notice there. Um, festival promotion, these are our target areas once again for that. Those are the markings that we, marketing that we do, uh, for, uh, for the festival. Um, one of the things we launched, like I said, we launched that national and public relation campaign and we're seeing great results from that. And we've received those stories. Um, 2020 marketing and tourism staff strategy. Um, as you can see, those are strategy. Uh, we did have to cut our budget this past year. So there's some things that we might not be able to do, but we're working on optimizing everything that we get done. Uh, these are some of our marketing projects that I think are notable, um, that we work with our tour group coordinator Tracy. And we believe we will get those groups back. We are building a new website for BCM that we received grant funding for. It's, uh, completely funded through that. So we're excited about that. Uh, I don't know if you all know, but we have a kiosk at the Welcome Center on the Virginia side of town. And we also have a kiosk in our BC, in our museum. And that was, uh, grant funded also. But on that kiosk, when somebody stopped at the Virginia Welcome Center, all of our restaurants in our downtown are listed on that. All of our events and everything. So it's like an operational and it's, it is astounding when the welcome center is open, how many visitors they get in there. Okay. We want to strengthen our community partnerships. Uh, these are some of the people, the people that we work with on a regular basis. We did get a South Arts Cross Sector Impact Grant that we're looking at, that's a tongue twister. But we worked with John Luttrell and, um, you had to submit a, a letter of interest of what you're thinking that you want to spend the money for. So we applied for festival expenses. And we should know in the next couple of weeks if we get to apply for it. Okay. This is our strategy percent sustainability. Okay. Festival revenues, um, we want to exceed the ticket number that we set for ourselves, knowing that we have a lot of tickets out there that, um, uh, people already have those tickets. Uh, we will continue to that since we announced our lineup, which is very exciting for us. Um, because we, Kim had certain numbers that she wanted to hit. And we really blew that out of the water and are seeing a lot of people inquire about tickets that have never been to our festival. So I think it really speaks volumes that people are craving live music and want to get out. And, um, I think they're thirsty for that music. Okay. Radio Bristol, um, we are working on getting some national and regional, uh, sponsorships for Farm and Fun Time. We think PBS is a great way for us to, um, leverage that sponsorship. Um, we hope that we get our signal expansion. And, uh, once we are able to get that, we will be able to apply for a public broadcasting grant. If you're in that area, you get it every year. So. Okay. Museum financial building blocks, we have different ways that we support our museum. Our primary block is our 1927, which is the individual get giving. We're, we are very proud of being able to maintain a 90% renewal rate. One of our main focuses this year is on our business giving. So if you have a business, yeah, I'd love to talk to you. Um, and we do, we have a great grant and grant task force. We have volunteers out there looking for grants all the time for us. And they're finding foundations that we've never heard of and we've been very successful. These are some of the 2020 grants, uh, that we got this year. Um, and for government support, you know, we receive a lot of support from the city of Bristol, Tennessee when it comes to festival time and your, uh, essential services such as police and fire and operation, your, uh, support and fentanyl and all that do. But you know, on our grants, we can mention those, but they also ask what kind of money are you getting? So we continue to make our case to the cities that, uh, we need to show that funding. And then we hope and believe that we will have another successful, uh, Super Raffle this year. We've had two in a row. So, you know, three's a charm. Why should Bristol support BCM? For Bristol being the birthplace of country music. And it's a legacy that will never die, a leg, legacy that should be leveraged and promoted. BCM is in the best position, we believe, to leverage that legacy with our museum, our festival and our radio station. And I thank you for letting me present today.
Okay, question from council.
I've got a couple. Um, I guess firstly, what was as far as for the museum with the, I guess of the PPP loans? What was the, did you end up as far as a net of this year of a loss? With the money you received, I mean, from the government and everything. And then of the, I guess the money that came back that was donated for the tickets on the ticket sales. Where did you kind of end up? Not exactly, just, I'm just.
You know, I don't know that I can give you that number because I'm not prepared to. Um, I'm looking a little. Look here, I might tell you. For the museum. And I hate not to have Becky in here because she, can I get that to you just so I know that I'm not misplugged?
Yeah, that's fine. No, no problem. I was just curious of, um, of that. And another question, I guess that I have of the tax that is added to each ticket sale.
Okay.
Um, I guess this is two part that goes to Bristol, Virginia for the ticket sales for not only last year, because I'm assuming that even the tickets that were sold. Even though the show did not happen, that tax still went to Bristol, Virginia for those ticket sales. Then was it refunded back of the ones that you had to refund the ticket sales from? But my main question is for the year before last, in the last two years, what has the total amount that you guys have paid to Bristol, Virginia for that tax on these ticket sales?
Okay, I, I can't, I have it from the beginning when that started. But I will tell you the one question that you asked about the refunds of the ticket. The city did refund that, um, the sales tax to us because we had to refund that to, to the ones that asked for a refund. Okay? Yeah. So since they, we started paying the admission tax in October of 2014. So through January, the 25th of 2019, because I don't have the February numbers. Um, total that we paid to the city is $265,788. Now I can break that down between festival and museum. For festival tickets, we have, um, paid $203,322. And for the museum, we've paid $62,446.
So. So it's about 40,000 a year.
Give or take, yeah. Uh, well, probably, uh, well, you know, the first year it was only, uh, three months. So, uh, yeah.
And Leah, if that tax assessed on Farm and Fun Time tickets as well?
Yes.
Okay. We, we don't have a figure for that specifically, do we? For the Farm and Fun Time?
I did not. I just have it broken down as museum.
So there's, there's an additional Farm and Fun Time figure.
But it, it's in that total that's in the museum. Yeah, it's in the total of the museum.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else? I've got a couple myself. I'll let everyone else go first.
I'll send that out to the, um, city council probably tomorrow because Becky's working on the SBLG grant today. Okay?
Thank you.
Look, Leah, in your presentation, you talked about that certification from the state of Tennessee for safe opening of museum or whatever it's called. Does Virginia have anything like that? Or how does that one from Tennessee apply for you in Virginia?
Uh, you know, uh, we just went through that program and, and they approved that. And I would tell you, I don't know of Virginia having a certification like that.
Okay.
I think that was brought to us from, uh, from an email that we got from the Bristol chain.
Okay. And it was mentioned a couple of times that, you know, sales for this year looks like they're, they're doing very well uh, coming into the next, um, uh, festival and all. What do you anticipate? How much gap do you anticipate making up from the losses last year? Uh, because I think it was mentioned a couple of times that, you know, sales are exceeding expectations. Uh, is there some number that you guys were looking at?
You know, uh, when I say it's exceeding, we had a target and Kim, if you want to address our festival sales, you're more than welcome to do that.
I'm happy to. Uh, Mayor, that's a great question. We, um, had, as Leah showed, over $300,000 that defers. And so, uh, that's almost, we're looking at that as like a $300,000 loss on this year's budget. So we have cut, um, a lot of different expenses and things like that. Uh, and we've set our ticket sales, uh, to be able to, um, to, to meet where we need to be, but also knowing that we're going to have $300,000 of folks come into the festival as well. Uh, so we do have ticket goals this year, um, in there. If you were to look at budgets and compare to year over year, it's going to be, you're going to see it's going to be a little bit less because we have everybody that's coming from the defers. Um, but we are on track to hit the goal that we have set. Um, so if we're able to hit that goal and then we are able to have a defers, you're going to have a similar attendance, uh, at this year's festival.
Okay. Uh, one, one other thing that, that's I've noticed for some time is that, you know, city of Bristol, Virginia and city of Bristol, Tennessee, uh, made a five-year commitment of $100,000 a year to, to the museum or, or to BCM. And, uh, you know, in, in doing some tracking stuff, it appears that Bristol, Tennessee met their goal. Uh, but it does not look like Bristol, Virginia met that goal. And I know it used to be carried out as a, as a number that's highlighted as still owed, but, uh, I don't think it shows anymore. Is there a reason why that was taken away?
I, I think. What do you mean?
Or are you still trying to get that $100,000 that's?
We, we would love to be able to get that $100,000.
What order are you doing to try to get that?
Well, you know, we've, we've talked to them, but, um, it's a challenge, I guess is what I would say.
Have you, well, nevermind. But you, you really, really, really hope you get that $100,000, right?
We're hoping.
Did, did you bring it up in your presentation to them?
Yes.
Them being owed to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would just say, I serve on the BCM board and, uh, I, for full disclosure, serving the capacity of Chair of, uh, Development, uh, Ongoing Development of Revenues. And I will say that, um, in regard to the ticket sales, the $300,000 deferred, we all have to understand that there were expenses associated with last year's festival that had to be met. There is also the understanding that some of those revenues from the deferred tickets go, uh, have gone, especially this past year into, uh, maintaining the sustainability of the organization, uh, in and of itself. Uh, that while the, uh, BCM through, has done virtual presentations of Farm and Fun Time and other things. What has normally taken place to secure those revenues for ongoing sustainability has not always been possible. So I just, uh, to be clear, I just, uh, would hope that no one would let that $300,000 deferred ticket sales throw them off, thinking that there is $300,000 sitting in a reserve fund. As with all years, year over year, I also serve on the finance committee. Uh, year over year, those revenues are metted throughout the year to cover ongoing expenses. And, um, and then to begin, uh, paying incurred expenses for the next festival year. So just to be clear about that. Um, in regard to the, um, uh, $100,000, uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll touch base on that as to what has been discussed. It's that, um, you know, it was a commitment that was made that hasn't been fulfilled. We've been given a variety of reasons as to why that hasn't been fulfilled. But our understanding is that, uh, the BCM is the only one, once the movie theater went out at Exit 7. And the movie theater at Exit 7 is a for-profit business. But that the BCM is the only nonprofit that is currently adhering to this and the only nonprofit that is required to pay this. And there is some question as to, uh, truly the legality as to whether or not, and I'm speaking as a board member and I'm speaking as an individual, as to whether or not it is a fairly assessed event, uh, tax. So that has all been explored. The conversation has continued. There's a desire to not, of course, not alienate, uh, anyone, uh, from Bristol, Virginia in regard to this. We recognize their financial dilemma. Uh, but to your point, Mayor, there has been discussion, there have, and, and, but there is the realization that the BCM is the only nonprofit is, is being assessed this event tax.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, we'll move over to Ms. Maggie Elliott from Believe in Bristol.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Just give me one second and I'll get my screen pulled up.
And Maggie, while you're doing that, my apologies for not being involved with the board meeting yesterday. We welcomed our fourth grandson yesterday and I'm currently here getting ready to, because of COVID, we haven't gotten to meet him yet. So after this meeting, we are off to meet our fourth grandson.
That is wonderful. I think that's an approved absence for sure.
Yep.
Alrighty. Want to make sure I'm good here. Move this around real quick. Alrighty. Well, thank you all so much for having me today. Of course, we, we've met before, but I am Maggie Elliott and I'm the Executive Director for Believe in Bristol. Um, Believe in Bristol is an accredited program of Tennessee Main Street, Virginia Main Street, and the National Main Street Center. For nearly two decades, we have worked in partnership with both cities of Bristol to sustain and develop downtown as a vital economic, cultural, recreational, residential, and historic center of our community. I'm going to start with some of the sad and hopefully end with some hope. Um, to say that last year was not the year we had expected would be a giant understatement. In early 2020, Believe in Bristol was gearing up for a busy year. New businesses on the horizon, new projects to launch, and a wave of positive momentum to ride and accelerate. We were really, we were ready to focus our efforts on recruiting new businesses and adding more things to do in downtown Bristol. We were excited to dig in because we knew our work would push downtown closer to full revitalization. And then the pandemic hit. Over a few weeks, we watched as the whole world shifted. As it became clear that COVID-19 was a serious threat to the health of our nation and the world, we all began to understand that doing our parts, our part to keep our neighbors safe was important. But what is important is, of course, not always easy. As restrictions were put in place to prevent the spread of the virus, small businesses were faced with the task of changing everything they do at lightning speed to keep their customers safe, their staff employed, and their doors from closing. And so keeping our businesses alive was Believe in Bristol's top priority. We could see that staying on top of new information and opportunities was hard for them, so we did it for them. As mandates around safety protocols were created and revised, states of emergencies were declared, and funding opportunities like PPP, IDOL, and locally funded initiatives were created and recreated, we worked to ensure that every business was given the information they needed to know. Although this was invisible to the public, this was the single most important thing we did all year. It was an incredibly difficult year for everyone in our downtown community. And yet, there was also progress. We welcomed 11 new businesses to the district, adding amenities that will attract visitors for years to come. We watched as important downtown buildings were restored and repurposed, and new developments began. Public and private partnership was strengthened as we were able to offer a unique experience to Bristol, Tennessee's food and beverage-based businesses. A total of 10 businesses have been awarded. More than half of those businesses' grants have been executed and implemented. And then the remaining businesses will see progress continue in the next coming weeks. We know that as cases remain in the red for our region, a large portion of our community still remains uncomfortable with dining indoors. And so this resource to those businesses, who, as discussed, have been disproportionately affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, were able to continue to serve the Bristol community. That was, of course, a partnership between Believe in Bristol and the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and we thank you for that opportunity. Downtown Bristol has achieved economic revival by concentrating and investing in community assets in our downtown commercial corridor, with the goal of supporting the closure of locally-owned small businesses, fostering an accessible entrepreneurial ecosystem, improving the quality of life, and promoting an inclusive sense of place that retains and attracts residents and visitors respectively. We could not have accomplished this revival without the continued support of the City of Bristol, Tennessee. Just a few quick, but of course, important facts from the National Main Street Center about why it is important to continue this support. This is not new information, but of course, um, post or still mid-pandemic, of course, but as we move out of, out of the scarier times, um, it's important to remember these things. As we know, Main Street is the historic core of our community. Its buildings may embody the community's past and its visual identity. A historic commercial district is often a major tourist attraction. When people travel or shop, they want to see unique places, especially ones that offer a unique experience. What more of an experience can you get than being in historic downtown Bristol? Being in two places at once and experiencing what southern hospitality truly looks like. And a vital Main Street area reduces sprawl by concentrating retail in one area and uses community resources wisely, such as infrastructure, tax dollars, and land. Downtown commercial districts are prominent employment centers. Downtown Bristol is a great example of that, with 168 businesses and 1,148 full-time employees, 622 of those in Bristol, Tennessee, collectively making downtown Bristol Tennessee's second-largest principal employer. The commercial district represents a huge public and private investment. Since 2007, we have seen nearly $17 million in public investment and over $50 million in private. In 2020, just over $600,000 in public investment from our cities was leveraged against almost $1 million in private investment. We will see these numbers continue to grow as we have exciting development projects underway. This is proof that downtown Bristol is a financial generator for our cities. We must, of course, realize the full potential of the new opportunities Bristol has on the horizon. Downtown Bristol, more than anything else, represents the authentic Bristol experience. It's where people fall in love with our town. Believe in Bristol has always been the steward and creative force behind packaging and selling that experience with quality content, while also being a communication channel to our local entrepreneurs. Downtowns and urban commercial districts like downtown Bristol won't recover from the economic impacts of the global pandemic simply by way of government proclamations to reopen or marketing campaigns to bring customers back downtown. Unfortunately, it's not that simple. A return to bricks and mortar shopping and other downtown activities, like getting a haircut, participating in a fitness class, eating in a restaurant, and attending a special event, will all be greatly dependent on having an informed and strategic recovery plan. Believe in Bristol's key strategic goals are as follows. One, to foster a thriving and diverse storefront economy that supports downtown Bristol's business community, excites visitors, and meets the needs of residents. Two, cultivate a lively and engaging downtown atmosphere that identifies downtown Bristol as a destination for locals and tourists alike. Three, create a truly welcoming environment that enhances the experience of downtown Bristol's visitors and residents. And four, increase Believe in Bristol's organizational effectiveness and ability to deliver on its mission now and in the future. We plan to execute these strategies with a few special areas of focus for 2021. The small businesses that make up our downtown environment are truly the heart and soul of this community. We need them in order to thrive as a city. In 2020, we lost a total of 13 downtown businesses. Our progress towards the, towards the lowest vacancy rate in over a decade flipped in the blink of an eye. Our work plans for 2021 include several business recruitment strategies, including creation of small business success kits. These are important as historical recession trends show an increase in entrepreneurial activity. And we're already seeing this happen as the majority of our time currently is fielding phone calls and meetings, uh, for new businesses in downtown. We plan to reinvent our entrepreneur grant competition, continue research and development of a coworking facility for downtown, as well as targeted trainings for our existing businesses, with, of course, specific focus on e-commerce solutions, financial planning, and disaster preparedness. Main Streets across the country have always provided an important civic forum where members of the community can congregate. Parades, special events, and celebrations help to reinforce an intangible sense of community. In a normal year, Believe in Bristol hosts upwards of 15 community events, all of which had to be canceled in 2020. These cancellations were not only a financial hit to our organization, but a significant hit to our community pride and quality of life. In this new year, we are tasked with more than our traditional event planning. We are tasked with bringing our community back to life. Because Believe in Bristol is known for producing quality programs and special events, are a reliable organization and fiscally responsible, and naturally because downtown is the community space, community space in which we traditionally gather, we proudly fill the community cheerleader role and become that go-to resource for the cities to come when planning or legwork is needed. We still don't have a definite timeline for when life goes back to normal, and does it ever. But we move forward in hopelessly optimistic fashion. We hope and plan to, to kick up community events in the summer. Border Bash won't just be Border Bash. It will be the first time members of our community are able to gather and celebrate together. But we know things will look different than they used to, and those changes will require additional planning and precautionary resources than we are used to. We want to take this opportunity to revamp our annual events while introducing new quality events and programming for Bristol locals and visitors alike. Some of those things include, but of course, we're not limited to, return of our community favorites, such as our Border Bash Summer Concert Series and Star Spangled Celebration, State Street Trick or Treat, our commun, or our Christmas events and loft tours. But we also want to bring in new events and life to downtown, such as Support Local Fridays Initiative, a potential downtown yard sale, creative placemaking and other public art projects, a Restaurant Week, New Year's Eve events, and other potential outdoor events, such as a Wine Walk, Pepper Fest, and potentially more. But then, of course, we would love to enhance our marketing for our organization. This includes a website redesign, a branding cleanup, uh, which also includes quality content, a three-tier video project to spotlight downtown merchants that's actually already in progress, and a downtown gift card program. I wanted to give you all a breakdown of how those all transpire into our $50,000 ask for the next, for the next fiscal year. Um, the pandemic has been painful, but the momentum of downtown Bristol is not stopping anytime soon. As we began a new year, we knew that, we know that these challenges continue. But as an organization, we have shown that we can adapt to whatever is thrown our way. We are ready to continue the work. And I wanted to leave you all with some of the kind words from our downtown merchants that were shared with us this past year. In times when we were feeling helpless in assisting with their own business survival, they in turn encouraged us to keep going. Everything we do, we do for them. And thank you so much for your time. Try to be as brief as possible. And I know that I went through that a little fast, so I will, um, I will send that PowerPoint to council so that you're able to review all of those statistics.
Questions from council?
I just, I guess, have one of, which is the same question I'm going to ask of each nonprofit is of, as a net from last year of with any monies that were received because of COVID or PPP, whatever, of where you guys ended up for last year?
Absolutely. I will pull those figures.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Maggie, I was, I, you have got, sorry, I've, um, I've got a conflict. I'm working on two different Zooms, but, uh, can you go over the, uh, grant monies? Um, if, if you've already gone over that, I apologize, I may have missed that. But any of the grant monies that we have put out, can you go where we stand on that, if we have money left over, where we are with that?
Absolutely. Um, so 10 businesses were awarded. Um, and we have distributed all of the available grant funds to this point. There are some that we're, we're finalizing those, those contracts, so they are promised to those businesses that were accepted. Uh, but some of those final checks have just not been written, but they have been accepted.
Okay, are there any, are there any other grants that have been asked for that we did not have the money for?
No, we were able to distribute, um, all of those who were within compliance of the Tennessee guidelines and COVID, um, state, um, mandates, um, safety protocols. Um, those who did apply and were in compliance with those were, were all able to be awarded.
So did they, I guess, once again, I, because I'd asked earlier this month of just having a list of those and what was, you know, what was purchased? Did they send you the receipts of what they had purchased and then the checks were cut? Or did they just tell you what they were going to purchase and then you sent the check and then they sent the receipts in after it was purchased? How did that exactly?
Sure. So the original plan was for it to be a reimbursement grant. Um, that's traditionally what we do for our entrepreneur grant program. However, um, with, with us wanting to move this program along timely, um, they had provided us a full plan, um, and, um, itemized list of, um, equipment that they, that they would be purchasing. Um, and so we were able to cut the checks, um, for them ahead of time. They are to provide us a full report, um, and then a comparison of sales. Um, I think we have 90 days out of the execution of those contracts so that we can compile a full report. We did do two rounds of that program, and so that's the reason for some of those checks already being cut and some of them in progress. Um, but we, we have seen, um, the supplies go up. We've been, um, we've been going around and compliance checking and making sure that everything is falling in line, whether they had applied for tables and chairs, making sure that the tables and chairs are there. Um, there were some vinyl sightings. That was a big request for, for a couple businesses, um, and making sure that those installations, um, were installed or are in the process of being installed.
So we all received information about a potential startup restaurant? Um, and was that vetted by the, uh, by the board, or can you tell us anything about that?
Yes, that, um, that was vetted by our executive committee, and, um, we were able to award, um, a, a small portion towards, towards that new business.
But again, at this point, all, all of the grant monies have been exhausted. And moving forward, um, besides the new startup, is there anybody else that was, that was, uh, looking for additional monies or, or anything like that?
That has been, um, not, not on the food and beverage-based businesses. We've had, um, some startup inquiries, uh, which, of course, we, uh, focused towards our entrepreneur grant competition, which we're hoping to kick up, um, early summer. So we're able to help them in that area, uh, through that program.
Maggie, I have a question. I, I know you're probably doing this, but, um, how do we go about encouraging the merchants to stay open later hours in the evenings and on Saturdays? You know, I've, I've heard from different people at different times, I'd like to come downtown and shop, but when I go down, they're, they're both closed. So what are, what are they saying to you?
That, that was a challenge, uh, pre-COVID, as we know, um, extending hours beyond. And we had started a First Fridays Initiative to at least get, um, one day a month extended hours. Um, we started to really get some traction behind those, of course, uh, before the pandemic. Um, but it, it's a constant struggle. Um, the biggest, um, the biggest issue that merchants have at the current moment is, um, is their payroll and employees and being able to man those extended hours. Um, but we continue to encourage, um, and as the, as the weather has gotten better, we've seen people, um, updating their business listings or their business hour listings. Um, and we will continue to, to support that extended hours, um, any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Maggie, the third from the last slide that you showed, it was the breakout of the 50,000. Could you go through 10,000 and 15,000? Would you go through those numbers just briefly as to what? So I can jot a few notes here.
Absolutely. And I'll go ahead and pull that back up for you, too. Um... So it's a variation of this beginning slide and then breaking it down here. So, um, as you all have done in the past, has contribute $10,000 specifically towards the Border Bash Summer Concert Series. Um, we've gone ahead and looped in, obviously, our annual events with that, um, including our State Street Trick or Treat and our Christmas, um, Christmas event. So there's no additional, um, existing event, um, ask there. Um, being able to, to grow our entrepreneur grant competition, um, we receive separate grant funding for this program, so you all are not necessarily paying the... Um, we receive separate grant funding for this program, so you all are not necessarily paying the prize money. But you're um able to support those entrepreneurial efforts or different um monthly business training. Well, monthly business gatherings or um trainings that we're able to get. Um, that supports those efforts. Um, putting in additional $10,000 towards new initiatives. Um, or being able to um to develop um program ideas. So some of the things that I had said, um, a Restaurant Week Downtown, we'd love to focus that in the winter. Um, as we have a good hold of summer and fall events, we'd like to um increase promotion during the winter and slow times, aside from obviously our Christmas promotions. So Restaurant Week, um and new outdoor community events, those are the things we feel safe with planning currently. Um, so that's what I mentioned as far as yard sale, Pepper Fest and potential Wine Walk, which is a great um. Great event suggestion that was given to our board. And then um, we've actually been um having conversations for several years now um about developing a New Year's Eve event. Um, and something we don't have, um and really, we don't really have in our in our region. Um, so being able to develop something new and exciting for the community in that sense. And then also increasing our creative placemaking, which includes public art projects such as uh traffic control wraps and murals are a big piece of that. And then, of course, we're always wanting to um increase visitation to downtown Bristol in any way, shape or form. So this goes back to our, I mean, enhanced marketing. Um, and that um, that's very broad, but we have lots of projects to fill into um increasing visitation to downtown on a year-round basis.
Sorry, some of the words that we hear over and over again is marketing, entrepreneurial. Basically seed money for new initiatives where there would be a return on investment. So again, for full disclosure, I do serve on the uh Believe in Bristol Board and they have uh one and a half employees. And um, is that correct, Maggie? You're all, y'all are still at one and a half employees?
Yes, ma'am.
And uh, there there are several new initiatives that that we can see there. Along with it has been suggested that uh that we perhaps do a concentration so that Bristol becomes very much a downtown uh destination during the holidays. A lot, not limited to what it has been, but but through decorations, there's been discussion about uh music. Uh, through a speaker system downtown, a lot of enhancements that um would provide us with an even greater return on investment. So I just wanted to point a few of those items out. It's, a lot of it is seed money, and I think that's really important because, you know, in some instances, you can only spend a dollar once. But in other instances, you can spend a dollar and get $3 back. And I think that that's what's been suggested through some of these initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just comment, uh, one, when Councilwoman Powers says she serves on these boards, she serves as our representative on Birthplace Country Music and Believe in Bristol. Some of us also serve additionally on boards, not as official reps, but she is our official rep to be liaison in those organizations. Ask for someone from council to serve on their board. Um, I just wanted to add into the discussion that recently uh talking with our bookkeeper for Bristol's Promise. Um, I know we get our promises um back and forth, but anyway. And I thought it was interesting, she does a lot of nonprofit bookkeeping, and in her experience, she says there's usually 30 to 40,000 that is not covered. By traditional grants, et cetera, and I think most of that is what sometimes we call admin, but it's actually programming and it's helping to make all these things work. Um, so I think that's just really important to understand that concept that 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 it really takes that level to make the organization go. Um, and I think granting organizations that uh in the past have talked a lot about programming support. Have begun to realize that it's not just the specific programming, but it is the overall management of the organization that is critical. For those uh programs to work. So just want to put that in for um our knowledge and understanding of how um anything works, but especially our nonprofits that we're working with. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we move on? Thank you, Maggie. Thanks for move on to United Way of Bristol, uh Ms. Coopers?
Hello, everybody. Thank you all so much for giving me some time. Uh, Tim, or Tim's getting ready to share my screen, so I appreciate you, Tim. Perfect, thank you. Well, I'm gonna try to go fairly quickly because I have quite a few slides too, but I will certainly um be glad to answer questions at the end and get additional information. Um, just want to share a little bit of history with you. United Way of Bristol has been in our community for more than 79 years, evaluating the needs and providing a safety net of services. Around our most vulnerable population. And when I say vulnerable population, I mean our domestic violence folks, our children and youth, our homeless population, our Alice families. Um, Alice, hopefully you know what that means, but Alice is a term that was coined by United Way uh several years ago. And it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And basically, those are our working poor, the folks that work full-time. Some of them work two and three jobs and still really struggle just to put food on the table along and our elderly as well. Uh, next slide, please. Tim, can we uh fix it so that it all comes up at one time? Is there a way to do that? I'm sorry. Thank you, great, perfect. Um, we weave, uh when we were working on our our video this year for the campaign, we came up with an idea. And and it's only about three to three and a half minutes long, so if it's okay later um with city council, I will send that to you all. Um, but we look at the work that we do as weaving the fabric of our community to ensure that no one falls through the cracks. And so what that means basically is we provide those safety net of services layer upon layer upon layer. That helps strengthen our community and keeps folks from fall, keep folks from falling through the cracks. We care about our community, it's our job to know our community's tough toughest challenges. And every day we find the best ways to bring people together to solve the issues that matter most. And I'll share a little bit uh later with you all uh on one of the biggest needs that we have right now and what we're doing to address that. We, the work that we do improves lives, excuse me, and empowers every family by focusing on health, education, financial stability and basic needs. We look at these as the cornerstones of a strong community. Many United Ways focus on three of those, education, financial stability and and um health. But our board, our volunteers and the kind of community we have. Um, makes us need to be able to focus on that basic needs component as well. We believe that we can do a lot to help folks in those three areas of health, education, financial stability. But if we can't help them uh and make sure that they have those basic needs as they go through getting housing or getting a better job or, you know, affordable childcare, whatever that is. Then it doesn't do any good, so we do focus on those four areas. Next slide, please. Want to talk just briefly about one of the biggest ways that our United Way raises funds, as most do, is their annual fundraising campaign. Um, we are One United Way for the City of Bristol. Um, we do City Bristol, Virginia, the City of Bristol, Tennessee, a portion of Salton County, Bluff City and Blountville, and that is our service area, and that's where we raise funds. This year, we lowered our goal just a little bit because of the pandemic. Um, we weren't sure how that was gonna come out, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to fund our agencies at what the level we committed to them. And we kind of do, we put the cart before the horse, we do our E and A process. And go ahead and commit to our agencies based on a successful campaign in the fall. That we will give them X number of dollars. We do that in the spring, it goes before our board in January, July and is approved, and then we let our agencies know in August. And then we raise our money in August uh and in the fall. And so we didn't want, we wanted our agencies to have a good idea of how much money we felt like we could raise and allocate for them. Um, we were very successful in our campaign, our goal was a million dollars, and we raised a million 107 028. Which was huge for us because I'll just tell you, um, while we're raising that money, we're trying to work with our families and individuals and make sure they have those resources every day. And so, um, you know, it was very difficult, but our community has always stepped up and really helped us. Uh, another huge uh component of what United Way does is our community needs assessments. Um, we've done the traditional community needs assessments every three to five years, um going back many years. But what we're doing this year are having community conversations. And that's what we've done, and we've wrapped those up. Um, we actually began those and the planning for those in early 2020. When the pandemic hit, we had to stop all of that because we couldn't have a big group at the library or, you know, big groups located at the Slater Center. And uh, so what we did was uh we had Zoom meetings with about 20 different organizations in the community. Um, and Malin, thank you so much for providing me the information from the City of Bristol, Tennessee. And Bill, thank you and Margaret both for participating in the meetings with our board. In order to be able to gather that information, what we're doing right now, we're working with Virginia Hollins Community College, they are assessing all of the responses. And they will put that information together, so we'll have that data. And we can better focus the dollars that we raise, the grants that we go after and the grants that we can, we receive on those areas of greatest need in our community. One of the other real huge strengths of United Way is how we determine which agencies we will fund. And the process that we go through, it's called the evaluations and allocations process. And we refer to it many times as E and A. And we bring together 65 to 70 local volunteers, many of you have served on an E and A panel before. Our agencies fill out their applications, they provide us with their audit, they provide us with tons of information. By the time they get that back to us in paper form, uh we're doing it online this year, but you're looking at notebooks that are, you know, this thick with information. And then they present, you know, what programs they want funding for, how many people they anticipate serving, how many they served the year before, et cetera. These volunteers then go in, um in during COVID, we had to do it all by Zoom, but they will actually, in the past, have gone into these agencies. Tour their facilities, talk to their board, talk to their staff. Many times they meet the clients that the agency serve, and then they look at that information, ask questions, and then that team comes back together and says. The agency acts, asks for X number of dollars based on our view of them and their financials and their audit and the the, all the information. Then we recommend X number of dollars for them beginning the next year. And then that goes from there to an E and A process with our team captains. Our board generally will give us, you know, uh you can allocate, you know, $900,000. And this is how we're gonna do it, and then it goes before our finance and our uh exec team for approval and then on to our board. Next slide, please. This year in 2021, we are financially supporting 36 programs within our 25 partner agencies. That's primarily the way that we support um the populations that we work with. But there's a whole lot more to it than that. We are partners, and I'm not gonna list everybody, but we work very closely with ARCH, the Appalachian Regional Coalition on Homelessness. Because we have such a large homeless population in our community, we're constantly looking for ways to get folks into housing and to get them off the streets. And to help them become, um, you know, be able to take care of themselves. We work with our school systems, both cities, of course, Haven of Rest, People Incorporated, Upper East Tennessee Human Development, Bristol's Promise. Um, the CHW program out at Ballard Health is a huge partner of ours. We work every day with those ladies out there on different folks that we're trying to provide services for. Um, we've been an integral part in the Twin City Reads with our It's Bristol's Baby book, I'm sure you all have seen that. We provide these to all of the new uh moms and dads and babies that are born out at Bristol Regional. We are distributing annually about 900 of those books right now. And it's an awesome book, it's all about Bristol, um and it's a hardback book that kids can look at. But if you look at it, when we give it to them, we have different resources for literacy and reading to help those families be able to. Um, just, you know, to share with their kids uh the joy of reading and so that when they get to be in third grade, they're reading on grade level, which is huge. Um, one of the things that our community does not have is one place that folks that need assistance or guidance in in navigating health and human services. And the needs that they have for their families can go to for case management. If they are staying at Salvation Army or the Haven, they have case managers there that will help those families and help those individuals. But if somebody has lost their job or maybe they've been in the hospital and they can't pay their bills or whatever their need is. There's not just one place someone can go to be able to get that case management. So over the years, United Way of Bristol has indirectly become the case managers for our community, and we have been doing case management for years and years. And um, you know, thanks to the city, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in the future. Um, we will, we hired a case manager recently to be able to um. Administer the COVID dollars that you all gave us for utilities, and so that's helped tremendously. Um, but just to give you an idea of how our calls increased, before COVID, we probably got about 30 to 40 calls a month from folks in the community. Many times it was something that we could handle that day. But a lot of these families, it takes days and sometimes weeks to be able to wrap all the resources around them. Um, so what happened when COVID hit, uh, we immediately went from, you know, zero to 60 really, really quickly within, you know, hours, it seemed. But during COVID and continuing now, we are answering between 60 and 70 calls a month. Um, and thank goodness we have Jessica in our office to help with that case management. But I'll just tell you, it's just a lot, um, you know, just trying to make sure that folks have what they need and that we can get them in touch with the programs and services that will help them the most. One of the biggest things that our community faces, as I said earlier, is our homeless population, a lot of families. Um, and we knew that prior to COVID, but it was definitely validated during COVID with the number of families that we worked with. To get into motels and we partnered, we got a grant from Wells Fargo. And we partnered with People Incorporated to be able to help these families get off the street. And be able to have a safe place for um them and their children and to be able to continue to work or whatever until they could get into housing. Um, but what we don't have is a transitional housing program, and that's a huge deficit for our community. We don't have a place that we can put our families and our individuals that are homeless to get them stable while they're waiting for housing. We have amazing uh housing authorities in both Bristol, Tennessee and in Virginia, and I'm very thankful that we have great, we're uh great um. Uh partnerships with both of them and and anytime that they can help us, they always do, and we're always reaching out, you know. What's the wait time on this for a one-bedroom or what's the wait time, you know, for three families? And they always really work diligently to help us, but it doesn't help us. Um, you know, when we don't have a transitional housing program. So um, we have been working with the Envision Center and United Way has put together a program called the Home Program. And uh, we're getting ready to roll that out, and basically what that's gonna do, it stands for Helping Others Maintain, excuse me, Maintain Essentials. And it is gonna be a transitional housing program to be able to get folks into um a safe place for a longer term. And then be able to help them with intensive case management. I'll share some more information with you on a little bit later, but we're already working with some landlords on being able to do that. Um, next slide, please. Okay, I just want to share a little bit about the history of the dollars that you all give us. Past city manager Tony Massey approached me in 2001 about United Way of Bristol possibly allocating the City of Bristol, Tennessee philanthropic dollars. To local programs and agencies that serve the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. City manager knew the strength of United Way, he was on our board and the E and A process that I mentioned earlier. And how it could be an excellent way to ensure that city dollars are being utilized efficiently and effectively to best serve the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. Um, the agencies that we initially funded, um, the gift from the city was $30,084. And 100% of that was given to the Children's Advocacy Center of Salton County, Bristol Regional Counseling Center, Bristol Regional Speech and Hearing. Frontier Industries and the Literacy Academy of Bristol. Next slide, please. In 2012, the city increased the amount to $36,000 and those same agencies, with the exception of the Literacy Academy, were funded along with a donation of $5,000 to Family Promise of Bristol. Several years ago, we were notified that we could actually open up the application process for the city of Bristol, Tennessee dollars to meet even more needs for the citizens in Bristol, Tennessee. And so what we did then was we funded Abuse Alternatives, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Bristol Faith in Action, Family Promise of Bristol, Girl Scouts of the Southern Appalachians, Girls Incorporated, Healing Hands, Rivers Way and Y W C Northeast, Y W C A, Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia. Excuse me. In 2020, the funding from the city was reduced to 20,000. The agencies applying for the funding from the pool of city dollars will be going through the E N A process over the next few months. So I'll be able to, after that process is complete, I'll be able to share with you all where those dollars went and which agencies those went to. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about COVID. In March 2020, when COVID hit, our Board of Directors quickly established United Way and Bristol COVID-19 Relief Fund for our Bristol community. The funds provided resources to help our agencies that had boots on the ground and were actively working to help our folks that had been impacted by the virus. Our local relief fund raised more than $86,000. Also that same month, we partnered with our six neighboring United Way organizations to establish a regional task force to support the efforts of those fighting the impact of global pandemic with the launch of the regional United Way of Northeast Tennessee, Southwest Virginia Relief Fund. And the purpose of that fund, it was established to enable businesses that have a businesses and individuals that have a regional footprint to give it a regional level. And I use Eastman Credit Union is a great example. They gave us a gift regionally. And then each community was able to look at that and see where it was needed most. Next slide, please. This is an example of some of the grants that were awarded during COVID. As you can see, the $13,187 C D B G grant from the city of Bristol, Tennessee for our COVID-19 quarantine plan, and I'll share a little bit more with you about that in a few minutes. $6,500 from Bristol, Virginia for the same purpose. $38,000 grant from People Inc. to provide operational support. And one of the things that we, we were able to do, it's, it's hard to get operational support grants, but we didn't have, we had one laptop when COVID hit. And it was an old laptop and we needed to be able to work remotely. Two of my staff are in situations where they, you know, had to work from home. So this People Inc. grant was wonderful. Now us to be able to do that. I mentioned the grant from Wells Fargo to support emergency housing assistance. We had a gift that allowed us to establish our reunite program. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with that or not, but I had a donor that called me and just was like, what's going on? Tell me about, you know, what you all need help with. And I said, we need some money. We've got a lot of homeless folks out there that are calling us almost every hour trying to get back to their families. And I think what happened is maybe they were here and they felt comfortable here. I don't know why they came here. Some of them come for, you know, a myriad of reasons. But when the pandemic hit, they didn't want to be here anymore. They wanted to be back home with family. And so we were able to get this $5,000 gift. And since we got that and started that program in May, as of yesterday, we have helped 40 homeless people get back to their families where they have a stronger system of support, where they have people that love them and want to be able to help them. And so what that does is get them back to where they feel more comfortable. But it also helps them not be a drain on the social services that we have in our community. And then the 172,000 plus, the 104,000 plus from the city of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia for the food and utilities that we have started administering earlier this year. We have not had as many people to qualify for that yet. I actually called Christina yesterday to let her know. But what's happening is the criteria for that is they have to have been impacted by COVID and they have to have already utilized the services of Bristol Faith in Action, Salvation Army, Upper East Tennessee Human Development. What we're finding with the folks is these are folks that have never had to ask for help before, so they have not utilized those services yet. So what we're doing is telling them, pointing them in the direction of one of those organizations to try to get help with their utility bill. And then if next month they still need help, then we are here to be able to help with that. But that has been huge and we anticipate that will get more busy as, as the year goes along. Next slide, please. This is just a few of the grants that we provided during COVID. $10,000 in grants to four of our partner agencies that were boots on the ground like Salvation Army, Communities and Schools, Bristol Regional Counseling Center, Girls Incorporated. $5,000 in food city gift certificates we distributed through all three of our school systems. We had additional gift certificates that we gave to our Alice families and our elderly in the community that were calling and needing help. $15,000 grant for People Inc. to help people in the city of Bristol, Virginia for housing so they didn't lose their housing and the same amount to Upper East Tennessee for our Bristol, Tennessee and Sullivan County folks. $2,000 to the Y W C A for virtual childcare learning. And then one of the things that we did, we worked really closely with People Incorporated during all of this to help those folks that were homeless with their kids to get into motels. We had some money to do that and then People Inc. helped with that as well. And actually Family Promise helped with that some too. But just so you all know, we had at any given time between 40 and 50 families and individuals, most of those had children living in motels because we, you know, they had applied for housing or we were working with them to apply for housing and they were waiting to get into something more permanent. And if you can imagine, we have one family right now that we're really working with. They were living in a motel before COVID hit. They have three small children under the age of five. And every time we talk with them, you can hear those kids screaming in the background and it's just a really sad situation. And so what we have to do, and this is where our home program comes in, we've got to be able to provide intensive case management for these families. We, which we're working with the Envisions Center to do that. We're developing several different categories. One of those is families that we know we can work with, families that are eager to get out of that situation that are working or looking for work. And that we can quickly move into transitional housing or permanent housing and provide that intensive case management for up to, you know, a year, a year and a half, up to two years to help them become stable and then they're on their own. And then another category is those families that don't want case management, don't want our help, but want to remain in that situation. And we're just not going to be able to help them anymore. Unfortunately, we've got to focus those resources on those individuals and those families that we, we know that we can help and we know that need our help and want our help. Next slide, please. And I know I'm running out of time, I'm sure. One thing I'd like for you to think about is just take a minute, if you were homeless and you tested positive for COVID or you thought you had COVID, where would you go to quarantine? What would you do? How would you get better? You know, where would you get food? Those kinds of things. And Teri Napier, a big shout out to you if you're still on there and Bill Sora and Margaret and all of those that helped us in the beginning to come together and look at our community and what services we could provide. You know, during, when COVID first hit, we met for weeks with community leaders and others via Zoom to put together a plan to how we would help our homeless if they were waiting for test results or if they tested positive. And we finalized that, our board signed off on it, the team signed off on it on a Thursday afternoon and we had our first call on Monday afternoon saying, we've got our first COVID positive patient. They're living in their car, they're working two jobs. What are we going to do with them? And so we went to the cities and said, you know, we need help with this financially. And so thankfully you all were able to give us some COVID dollars to be able to house our folks and be able to quarantine them. Since, if you'll go to the next slide, thank you, Tim. We led that process, as I mentioned, and we are responsible for making sure that these folks are taken care of. We have quarantined nine homeless people for a total of 87 nights during the pandemic. We have to provide housing for them, food, transportation, case management. And we also managed their release from that. We've got three right now, three individuals that we are housing. We started that, housing them on Monday and we're waiting for their test results. So if they test negative, which I'm 99.9% sure they're positive, then we will go ahead and release them. But if they are positive, then we will keep them for that full 10 days. But we were working with C H W folks out at the hospital on when we can release them. We've not had to hire security yet. Back in September, we had a young lady that we were housing and she had some severe mental health issues. And we had some issues of her not staying in her room and that kind of thing, but we were able to pull those things together to get her to do what she needed to do. And, but I mean, we have to provide. I can tell you that we do not house them right here in Bristol. I'm not going to say where we house them, but you know, it is not just a matter of dropping some food off for them right here. You know, we're looking at a long drive to be able to provide those breakfast, lunch and dinner meals and all of that. So we've been very blessed to partner with Salvation Army and they are able to deliver those for us. Helping those in need in our community is what we do. It's who we are, it's always what we've done. It's people helping people. How you all can continue to help. Next slide, Tim. And first of all, I want to go back and say, thank you all so much. Thank you to each of you on city council for always being there and not just for United Way, but for all the other things in our community that make our community a great place to live. Thank you for your support of United Way. Bill, Margaret, thank you all for serving on our board. Bill is also on our finance committee, so he can tell you all the things that go into making sure that we spend the money you all give to us the way that it is helping the most people. We are asking for $50,000 to continue to financially support our agencies and our programs and initiatives and projects. But we're also asking for help enrolling out this home program so that we have a transitional program to be able to help our families. It's going to be a transitional housing program where homeless families and individuals will pay reduced rent that will increase incrementally as they gain employment or as they get better jobs and get increases in their pay. And they'll be able to provide for their families. We will provide participants with intensive case management that will transform their lives and significantly, significantly impact our homeless population. We, this is a partnership between United Way of Bristol and the Envision Center. We have already met with some landlords on the Tennessee side as well as the Virginia side who are interested in working with us and interested in allowing us to be able to move families into their apartments and have them there until we can get them into permanent housing in Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia. We are asking other organizations for money to help with this as well. I'll be making a presentation to my local COVID group, asking United Way to put some money toward this. We are asking the city of Bristol, Virginia for money. I also have, we are actively involved in the United Ways of Virginia, United Ways of Tennessee state organizations. And Mary Graham, who's over our state organization is helping us to look for grants and other opportunities for us to be able to support this program. This is what we need. You know, that's been probably the majority of folks that we have worked with during the pandemic are our homeless families that we are trying to get into something more permanent. I am happy to entertain any questions. I hope that I have answers for them. The, as I mentioned, the partnership is between United Way of Bristol and the Envision Center. But the people doing case management for these families and individuals will be United Way of Bristol, the Envision Center, People Incorporated, the Haven of Rest and the C H W programs at Ballot Health. I'm so sorry. I know I probably went over my time limit.
Lisa, pre-COVID, were you seeing these same type numbers of, of the needs?
We were not seeing as many numbers, just like I mentioned with the calls, you know, we were getting 30 to 40 calls a month for different things, but a lot of the people that we were getting calls from were homeless people. People that are trying to get into housing. And I'll just tell you, you know, it's easy to say, well, if I was in their situation, this is what I would do or, you know, this is how I'd spend the money I had. But the families that we work with live in such chaos 24/7 that sometimes they just can't even keep their head on straight to figure out, I need to do this, then I need to do this. That's where that case management component comes in. You know, we worked with People Inc. during this, and I don't think I said this to you all, but the grant money that People Inc. got, and now this doesn't include what United Way of Bristol spent, but they spent over $200,000 in keeping people in motels so that they would be off the streets and have a place to stay. And so can you imagine if we had that $200,000, what we could have done with that to be able to get people into permanent housing and that kind of thing? But when you don't have an affordable, affordable housing and you don't have a transition program, it's just, this is the best way that we can do it. And, you know, we still need, I know that Family Promise got some E S G money to house folks in motels, which is going to be great because until we can get a bigger, you know, get this transitional program going and have more landlords that'll work with us and more places that we can put folks, that's the best that we can do. At least gives them a safe place to be and they're not on the street.
So I'll ask the same question that I've asked, I'll ask, but, and I understand that you guys, your expenses went up during this and also, but can you give us an idea of the fact of where you were the previous year as far as budget versus last year with, and I'm not sure when your, your year ends, but as far as with the grant money that we gave and others that gave, I know where, where you ended up.
Well, and I will, Debbie brought me something to her a few minutes ago, but she's our finance person, but it wasn't exactly what, what you're asking for. And so I will send you all something. A lot of this money, like for instance, the money that the city gave us, that you all gave us for the utility dollars and food, that is totally separate. There are no administrative expenses that go into that. The only thing that is outside of paying someone's electric bill and giving them food is being able to hire that part-time case manager. The other dollars that you all gave us to do the, the housing program for quarantining our folks, that is totally separate. I will tell you, you know, we decreased our agencies by about $100,000 and we decreased our goal, as I mentioned, and our goal this year was 1 million. We raised 1.1 and a little bit more. So what we're hoping to do is, and our board is great at this, we've never been one to want to sit on dollars we can get out in the community. So I anticipate what we'll do once we see a little bit better how our collections are doing, because that's always a concern, especially during a pandemic, is we will probably do some additional allocations to our agencies on top of what we commit to them for next year, provided everything is going well. We also have several years ago, John Tickle and Don Shaw came together and said, we want, you know, to expand United Way of Bristol's endowment program. Several years ago, we had some folks like Lee Chilato and Mira Smith Gill and some others that had been given small donations to United Way and earmarking it for an endowment. And Don and John said, we need to do this and we need to go out and ask folks to support this. And so we started that about four years ago. And I'll just tell you, if it wasn't for the amount of money that the endowment's been able to give us for interest and we put that toward our operating expenses, we'd probably be in a world of hurt. But I will get something for you, Vince, and send to all city council if that's okay, so that you all can see the breakdown of all of that.
Sure, great. Anything else for anyone?
A question I, Lisa, thank you for all that you do for so many and just appreciate everything that, that you've presented today. What is your expectation, if any, on this, on the tranche of federal funding that's coming out? Is the United Way looking forward to receiving any of that?
Are you talking about the American Rescue Dollars?
Yes.
We don't know. One of the things that, when I mentioned Mary Graham with United Ways of Tennessee, you know, that is so much more than even just a membership organization. She has just helped us and other United Ways across the state be able to identify dollars that are available. And we're actually working with her to see what we could do. One of the areas that we think One of the areas that we think, that we hope we'll be able to apply for some dollars for is to help with affordable childcare, as well as, you know, our homeless population. So my answer in a roundabout way is yes, we are looking at that, and we are looking at every opportunity. We are also members of United Ways of Virginia as well, and so they don't do as much grant research and that kind of thing from their executive director because they don't have a paid staff person. But we're also looking at those dollars as well. So yes, ma'am, we are looking at every opportunity.
And I know in the past I had served on the ENA, as an ENA representative, and I had someone approach me this past week about the number of nonprofits within our region. And I know that part of that whole ENA process is to be sure that there's not a duplication of services that, that, you know, or the breakout of services. Are you finding that it's getting harder and harder to raise monies because there are so many nonprofits? And if so, is there a strategy to try to reduce the number of nonprofits so that there's more collaboration within one organization?
Okay, let me try to address all of that, and then if I miss something, if you'll let me know. Yes, that is what our ENA process does. It's not only to make sure that those agencies are spending their money the way they said they would, and, you know, getting the most out of every dollar, but it's also to look at those duplication of services. When I mentioned our community conversations early on in my presentation, that is one of the things that we're looking at, is how can we, because there's so much need out there, so many nonprofits out there, how can we better utilize the dollars we have for those greatest needs? We've always done that, but what we're trying to do is dig even deeper. What we have found is that everybody comes to us, I'm not complaining, certainly, because that's a good position to be in when the community looks at you as you can, you know, meet the needs, what do you think those are, help us with that. But what happens is, we as an organization are trying to do all of this, and we're just digging this deep. What we're trying to do with these community conversations is truly find out what the citizens feel like are the greatest needs, because you all are the ones that live here along with us. And we want to bring that back in a little bit closer and dig deeper so that we can make a greater impact. And I hate to keep going back to the home program, but I cannot tell you, if we had a transitional housing program right now, that we could move folks in somewhere for five, six, seven months or to a year until they can get into housing and be able to wrap those services around them, make sure that, you know, whatever their needs are, that we're pointing them in the right direction. We're not going to do it for them. There's going to be some, you know, a lot that they're going to have to do in order to be part of that program. But we are going to dig deep with these families. We're not going to just transform the family we have right now. We're going to transform the next generation and the next generation because we're going to help them to know how to make better decisions, you know, know how to spend their dollars wisely. Now, when you mentioned to try to maybe consolidate, or not consolidate, but maybe get rid of other nonprofits, you know, we've not really looked at that way, you know. I don't know that that is United Way's job. We would certainly be willing to, you know, help look at that kind of thing. But I do know what you're saying.
Well, the point I was making, it's not to get rid of them, but to consolidate.
Well, exactly.
I would never suggest eliminating any nonprofit, because nonprofits believe that their, their purpose is, is of nature. But regionally speaking, or I guess one, one question that has been brought up is if we get into transitional housing, which I support, and I think would be a good thing for the community, you know, is it a function of the city? No, but is it a function of a nonprofit? Yes. But regionally speaking, are, are we seeing this in other communities like Kingsport and Johnson City? And if not, then are we going to create a great attraction to Bristol that will become a very large program?
You know, I can't really speak on what Johnson City and Kingsport have as far as transitional housing goes. I will tell you that, you know, we work very closely with Kingsport and Johnson City, United Way, and have done so even more so during the pandemic. I don't think that it's going to be, if we have a transitional housing program, it's not like we are going to, in my opinion, at least anytime soon, have, you know, fifty units that are available that we can quickly move folks into. I mean, we're talking six right now that we are looking at and are trying to work through with our landlords that are interested. And then we have two more landlords that are possibly interested. So this is something that's, I don't ever see us having, you know, anytime soon, fifty or sixty, you know, that many units so that everybody's sending things to Bristol. I will tell you, though, that when we finalized our COVID quarantine plan, I can't tell you the number of people. We had Johnson City Medical Center, we had other United Ways calling us and saying, we hear you've got a program, and you all put it together really quickly, and can we send somebody to you? And we're like, no, nope. We will do this for you, though. Here's how we did it, and here's who we worked with. And, you know, then we were able to share with them. But we were certainly, and I don't mean this, well, I'm just not going to say it. It's probably best not to, but, you know, we, we had enough going on in our own community that we were responsible for. And so we felt like we are glad to help them and are happy to share with them how that worked for us. And I'll just tell you, I know nine people, it doesn't sound like that many, but when you look at eighty-seven nights, I mean, you know, but I guess we are very blessed, and Terry Napier, if he could do this, he probably would, that we have not had to go to the full plan that we put together when we had forty or fifty. And I would ask that you all pray that we aren't, you know, aren't in that situation, because we can still manage it.
Thank you. The reason for my question is I think it's important for us as a council to pragmatically understand the scope that is trying to be accomplished here and implemented, that it's not, you know, eighty units, that it's the six plus two, and that there is limited capacity. So I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you. Well, and one more thing, and then I know if anybody has any other questions, you know, even if we have ten, let's say we have ten right now, and we are able to move people in there, you know, it's not going to be, the waiting list in both of our housing authorities are huge. And so, you know, it would be some time, which is a good thing for us, because then we can really dig deep and work with those families. But it's not like we're going to move them in and then move them on to permanent, move them in, moving on to permanent. That's our goal, but it will take some time.
So our housing list, it varies. I think it's two to three years, and then they cut it off periodically because they don't want to go out beyond that. So Bristol, Virginia's has been, most of the time, a little bit shorter than that, but still, it depends on what's going on for what they're, and also it depends on the size of the family, if it's a family, or if it's a single person, and what their housing stock is, but...
Well, I can tell you, I'll just give you a great example. I won't say too much, so if you know this person, but we received a call from Chief Austin back in the fall about an accident at a person's home, and they could no longer live there. I mean, they were lucky to be alive. We've been working with this person. You know, he has family that, that works at different places in the community. They're a great family. But we've been working with him. He is still, we were housing him in a motel. Then luckily, we had somebody that said, you know, we want him to do some work for us, and we've got an apartment that basically he can stay there until he can get in housing. Just got a job this week, doesn't have transportation, but trying to get his license back. And, you know, but we've been working with them since the fall, and we still haven't been able to get him into housing yet, so.
Also, just when Family Promise began, however, many years ago, ten or twelve, I think, it began partly because we did not have transitional housing programs in Bristol, and Kingsport and Johnson City did. So I don't think that's changed a whole lot, that we have really been, before COVID, we've been lacking in transitional housing. So to answer Lee Powers's question, we're behind. So other tri-cities are, they have been ahead of us. So the other, Lisa, you can correct me, but I heard recently that when asked, Captain Fultz at the Salvation Army said that their count is about twenty percent of folks that they serve are not from our area. So the idea that we're attracting folks, so that's the folks who are coming through and end up landing here for, sometimes I assume for a couple of nights, sometimes it's longer than that. But that was an interesting figure to learn, and less than what I think some people have in their minds.
Okay, anything else for anyone? Lisa, we sure appreciate all you guys do, and hopefully this coming year is, is going to be a little less taxing on everyone.
I hope so as well. Thank you guys so very much. We really appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Paramount Center for Yards. And I guess Rob Sims is going to be the presenter.
Okay, I am unmuted. So after listening to all of the presentations, we're just a little bit different in that we are a not-for-profit downtown, but we're providing a pretty good stream of revenue as a result of people coming into town, similar to BCMA. The numbers that we've, we've, and by the way, I want to thank, first of all, for the opportunity to present. And I also want to thank John Letrow for his support, because over the last four months, three months, we've been out with, we've been without an executive director as Miles and Kathy moved to California. So John, thank you so much for all of the help you did on our search committee, and we're, we're coming to, I think, a fairly, a decision fairly soon, but John really did help on that. So thank you so much in representing the city on the search committee. One of the things that, again, Rob Sims is president of the board of the Paramount, and you all probably know, and just, well, next slide, please, if you might, if you want, there you go. Staging a comeback, this was back in nineteen ninety-one, I believe, was the, was the, was on the theater marquee. Well, we're doing it again, only because in the year twenty twenty, in, in February of twenty twenty, our revenue, our March, March nineteen, March of twenty nineteen to February twenty twenty, our revenue in the month of February was three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. This month, the month of twenty twenty-one, it was sixteen thousand dollars. And so when we try to figure out how to make this work and, and challenge of reopening, the, next slide, please, some of the revenue that came in, and how the city works, back in twenty eighteen, we had profit, or if that's right, we're gains of seventy-three thousand on, on just a little bit over, under a million. And last year, we had gains of a hundred and five on one point eight million. We were on track to probably capture around two point three million dollars in revenue from grants, from donations, as well as the revenue from the shows. And so far this year, from, from March of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, from June of twenty twenty to the end of February, our revenue from shows was zero. We had nothing. All of the, all of the stuff that we had to do, we did meet some PPP loan requirements and got a PPP loan. We got grant, a small grant from People Inc., the Tennessee Arts Commission gave us some money, and those just barely keep the doors open. We've got, we've moved from six full-time staff to one full-time staff person and five folks that are working with us on furlough. They come in, they spend about ten or fifteen hours a week. And our expenses have been cut from around thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand dollars a month to a little bit, right around twenty-seven to twenty-six. So we've cut our expenses, but that is without any type of revenue, other than the donations and the grants. I'm sorry, next slide, please. There you go, two point seven million dollars was the, was the growth. Again, COVID came along, and we basically now have four hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of pre-sold tickets that are on the books, similar to what the Birthplace of Country Music Museum and the Birthplace of Country Music, the Rhythm and Roots has. It's about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars of advanced ticket sales. We have been very successful in moving the shows down the road. We've had one show canceled, Sebastian Bach canceled his show, and that was around forty-two thousand dollars of tickets that we had to refund. But the other, we did also, there was an acrobatic show that canceled. That wasn't very, that wasn't very well sold at that time. So we're, we've spent about forty-seven thousand dollars in return ticket sales, but we still have four hundred and eleven thousand dollars in advanced ticket sales that if we can't go forward with our program, we would be, we're, we're basically broke. We don't, we don't have any money to fund that. We do have, actually, we've got about an eighty thousand dollar deficit as a result of what we've been going on. With that, though, the Blue Stocking Club and Friends of the Paramount have stepped up. They did a lot of work in, in gathering funds. And I wish all of the City Council, I wish all the folks that are listening to the program would stop by and visit the, the auditorium. We have redone all of the murals we've done, we've repainted. We've been working on the envelope to keep the roof. The roof had, had some problems, and we've got that going. So it is a gorgeous place downtown, and really what, I guess what I would like to see is, and the ask for me, ask for the, for the board, actually, is twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe that's what we got last year. And that's going to help us keep the doors open. We just don't have the revenue. We've got, again, we've got, we're working on some grants. We are today putting in for the SBOG, the Shuttered Venue Operating Grant money that Scott Peak has been working on with us. We're on round three, which has to do with the SBA giving us money. We may get some of that. The Tennessee Arts Commission has offered us another, another thirty thousand dollars, I think. But both of those, both of those funds are necessary just to keep, just to keep us going. It, it's not a, let's, let's flip the switch and turn on the lights. It is a gradual process in which we have to retrain the volunteers. We've got to retrain the staff. We've got to make sure that we hire the proper person to take over the executive directorship. We have to take a look at our payroll and gradually rebuild the Paramount into the, the thriving success that it was in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So again, if, we can kind of go through the slides, but that's, if you want to, Tim. This is what the, the financial impact was, based on studies that Miles had put together. The income in twenty through June of twenty twenty, the income that was, that was brought into town from ticket buyers sustained seventy-three full-time jobs. We had a pretty good chunk of change in household income. We had eighty-eight thousand dollars that went to Sullivan County and the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in state government revenue. So that's one of the things, we've got, we've got a group of about a hundred volunteers. I think it's, it's a good thing. Mary does a great job of running it, and they sold forty-five hundred boxes of popcorn. So I think that's a great thing. Also, twenty-three thousand tickets, the, yeah, that's please, that's great. This is, one of the things that is really kind of fun to listen to, is the downtown merchants. They know when there's a show on because they're hopping. They, they, they know that there are people coming in town to stay at Bristol, Hotel Bristol, or they're staying at the new hotel, or they're staying, they're, they're eating food, and they're providing good traffic to the museum, or the train station, or whatever, but they're spending money. And the, again, the sales in January of twenty twenty was two hundred and twenty, almost a quarter of, well, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. February, a hundred and seventy-six, and then March, our ticket sales fell off, and again, from then, it's been zero. We've not, we've got some, and we've been able to push it out. This is what you can see now. We've, we've repainted, we've done the auditorium. We've got a lift in there now. They're working on the ceiling a little bit. Our planned reopening is July nineteenth. We had to have that date for SBOG. That is only if we can do it safely and with the, with the government, with the state legislature allowing us, or the governor allowing us to reopen. That's that, and with that time, then, we're going to start slowly, again, bringing in the, the smaller shows. That's that, and with that time then, we're going to start slowly again, bringing in the smaller shows so we can get our volunteers going. But there's, we're really excited. Cody Jinx, I think, is on the books in August. We've, and that's, that's $160,000 opportunity for our, for our theater to bring in the money. And it's, we provide, I think, a very viable, very valuable program, programming opportunity for both Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia. And again, what we're asking for is $25,000 just to keep the doors open. We've got to get through this and I appreciate it. So we're staging a comeback. So that's where I am. That's, that's, I wish I had more slides, but I don't. So I
Rob, I might have missed it. I haven't received, I guess, an ask, a financial funding request yet from
Okay.
Paramount. Do you have a monetary number that you're, that you're seeking?
Yeah, I was, we were, we were thinking around $25,000 and I understood it was, was sent and that's, that's my bad. Again, we've been, I'll make sure you get it, Bill. I appreciate the patience on that. It was 25. I think we, we got 25 last year and we, we do need it. I'd love it if you wanted to give us 50, but you know, if it's 25 or, or whatever you can, you can help us with would be certainly welcomed. It's a, again, with, with Miles running the show and Miles no longer here, we, we have a very active board. We've got board members helping manage the staff, board members helping manage the reconstruction effort or the refurbishing efforts. We've got staff helping with the finances, all because we don't have really staff that we can pay. We don't have enough money to pay them. So it's, it's, there's a lot of good things going on. We just have to get the money to get through this, this next short term and then it's off to the races again. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the question.
Mayor, I could say, as a member of the Blue Stocking Club, and Rob, if you would correct me if I'm wrong, we took on a project and initially it was to improve the sound system. From there, Blue Stocking agreed to take on paying for the lights. We raised and had hoped to have a fundraiser in honor of the 100 years of the women's suffragette movement and the vote. Along with the 100th anniversary of the Blue Stocking Club, we raised in excess of $500,000. And it was 30 women that worked together to do this and more than happy to do that. Am I right so far, Rob?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and so in realizing that, we, we went ahead and donated the rest of the money for interior restoration. And the Friends of the Paramount worked diligently to restore the exterior. There were roof problems, there was water damage. That was why the mosaics on the side of the wall had to be redone. And there was some repointing of brickwork. It was rather extensive, both inside and out. And I want to make that point because some might say, well, why did they do that in an era of COVID? All of these projects were already in the works, fully funded, people on site doing all of this at the time that COVID hit. And the thinking, you know, there was really no turning back out of that. And the Paramount was working at such a revenue positive position that we felt like it had been used extensively. There were these needs. No one had any idea that COVID would last the length of time that it did. It's, the good news is, is that the Paramount has for the most part, other than the seats themselves being pretty much refurbished. One thing that we had hoped to consider as the Blue Stocking Group moving forward was to reinstitute, reinstate movies, new projections, this and the other. That has not been accomplished. I don't believe. Correct, Rob?
We are in the middle of that project now. In part of the interviewing with our new executive directors, candidates, they all show an interest in it. We've got a, we've got a projector and we've got the opportunity. Again, one of the things that, and to, to the Blue Stocking Club's credit and to Friends' credit, that had we not had that type of support, we would not be anywhere near what we are now, first of all. Second, second thing is, the, in honor of the Blue Stocking Club, Amy Grant has booked on the 23rd of September and we're going ahead with that program with, in honor of the Blue Stocking Club. So the revenues and everything else that they had been promised. And there's one thing, there's one other thing. We've been very fortunate also to have some donors that are going to put new carpeting in. The, the walls were totally refurbished. We still have a little bit of moisture problem coming from the roof that we have to correct. But that $500,000 is correct and going forward, I think we've, we've got a very, very, what I think is a very exciting future in front of us. We just have to get through this.
Right. And there were some, there were some restricted funds that the Blue Stocking Club released as well to help with ongoing expenses. I'm saying all that to say the community has stepped up tremendously because it was not donations from those 30 women, but rather the collection of donations and they were collected foreign wide and they were collected in the form of small donations to larger donations. Having said all of that, we know that at the height, prior to COVID, that the Paramount was selling out tremendously. It was firing on all centers and cylinders. And we were collecting quite nicely in sales tax revenues from, from those ticket sales. And so I think that we understand that this is one of the crown jewels, if not the crown jewels of downtown. And $25,000 is not an exorbitant amount to be requested, given the fact that the community has invested well over a million dollars at this point into its refurbishment without relying on any city revenues at all. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there has been a tremendous effort made there. It was made prior to COVID and that the monies have been very carefully funded, expended and reviewed. Rob has been at the helm. Rob and Lee Sholto, as we're all aware, had come to begin making the request because they were going to begin working through an endowment process for the Paramount so that there would be the ongoing revenues from the interest of the endowment. Unfortunately, Lee has passed and Rob has carried this, to your credit, Rob, thank you very much. He has carried the mantle for this tremendously well. So I just have one question. Rob, when, when will the marquee be relit and the bulbs in force?
That's, that's the, that's another question. We don't know quite yet. We're working on the refurbishment of it and actually it may turn digital. One of the plans was keep the original signage and everything else, but make it a digital where you can have ongoing advertisements and those types of things that allow a lot quicker and a lot better, I guess, more community, more involvement with people seeing upcoming shows and those types of things. So that's in the works as well. I will say to your point, all of the money that came in from the Blue Stocking Club and the Friends has been marshaled very, very carefully. But I will also say that COVID was a blessing, I mean, was a, was a tragedy as well as a blessing for us because it, the amount of work that was required and what we put into it has been, would not have been accomplished over the last, over a month. It's been seven or eight months of nothing, but every day somebody in there working, replacing, doing all the things. It's been, it's been interesting. It's been very interesting. So.
And I would encourage everyone to go by and take a look. Thank you, Rob.
Really, deep back. Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
I'm sorry, I've been trying to get that connection. I apologize. Could you tell us any future plans or maybe where the board has vetted anything about the restaurant space in the downtown area about possibly leasing that versus continuing to keep it?
Yep. Thank you for the question. We're, we've got the, we basically got a lease signed and it is going to be, I guess we can announce it. Eats is moving from the Bristol, Virginia side to the Bristol, Tennessee side. The owner of Eats Restaurant, the barbecue shop, he's, he's leased it for us. We've got a pretty, the expenses, the cost of renovation, everything else, he's picking up a lot of it. We've got a little bit in it, but, so the restaurant space is there. We're also looking at refurbishing the upstairs space for maybe an arts council or whatever. That was in the works. Again, it always based on revenue and our revenue is just really bit, has been really bitten half. So not even that, it's been bit, period. It's been gone. So that, but the restaurant is, I was, David Grace helped land that. He's a member of our board. He got eats interested. They came in and they're gonna, I think it was gonna, maybe, they're gonna take it over the end of July, I believe, or the, either the middle or end of July and get everything going there. That's a good question though, because that's been kind of a weird thing to be. We were, we were owner of it and it was kind of hard to run a restaurant and a theater for miles. And so we're, we're in good shape now though. Thanks for the question.
Rob, I'd like to thank you for that. And I know council feels the same way. It's great to have a restaurant back in that block now and I think that'll support the Paramount and support that block and begin to really re-energize it. I thank you so much for, for making that move and you and your board.
Well, thank you. Thanks for that. And it was, it was a challenge. We had ideas and we've got, we've had some good renovation coming in from it. I just want to mention one thing too, because the concessions that we did in February of 2020, the concessions for fiscal year 2020 were $94,000 in the lobby. $94,000 of concessions. In the last year, it's dropped to 1,600. So all of our cash flows have to do with foot traffic, people coming in, seeing it, paying it, everything else. And the restaurant will only help that. The restaurant next door, especially with the, in the able hands of the folks at Eats, they do a very good job of putting stuff together and we're really looking forward to having that additional foot traffic and additional. And it's going to help us a little bit on our revenue because they'll, they'll, they'll be paying us a lease. And it's a five-year lease, by the way.
Right. Thank you.
Rob, I'd like to recommend you open up the front door and sell popcorn to people downtown. People come in and get popcorn while walking down the street there.
I hear you. And we, we're working on it. Thank you for that idea though.
One quick question. Have you approached Bristol, Virginia for any funds?
Yeah. That never happened. We have, we have their, yes. A lot of, a lot of it has to do, one of the things that we were just trying to eke out is a lot more grant opportunities and working more in partnership, a little bit with BCMA, doing some stuff as, as working through some of the things. But Bristol, Virginia is kind of a hard nut to crack and I don't mean to, I don't mean to disparage it. It's just they've had fiscal problems that, that caused them a little bit of pause in providing income, even though we provide a lot of foot traffic on the Virginia side. I don't know. It's, it's, we've approached it and we've talked at council, but it's still, it's still a little bit different.
Yeah. Well, that's the reason I ask, to know that, you know, we're, you provide revenue outside of town. Have they ever contributed to the Paramount?
Yeah, I believe back in the early days, they, when I say that, early days would be 90, 91, 92, back in those days. They were, I think it was in addition, it was about $25,000 a year for a while. And then they really got, and then everything happened. Everything kind of blew up on them. So, and it's always worth an ask. I mean, it is.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Thank you. Good question though. We need to have them on this webcast. We need to find out, find out some questions.
Any other comments, questions from council?
Vince, did I answer your question?
You did. Thank you. That's why I did not repeat. Yes, you did. Thank you.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say something, but it was pretty exciting for us as a downtown to see the Paramount doing as many shows as they've been. I've got three tickets, three different shows I've held my tickets for. But I feel like that our downtown, the city of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee is just busting at the strength seams. And when I think about the tri-cities and I go to all three, our downtown is alive and I'm proud of all the work that everyone does, not just the nonprofits, but our businesses to welcome people to our downtown.
And also with that, please, when you talk with Miles and Kathy and Miles certainly did a fantastic job of building up those shows and reaching out to the entertainment community that he was aware of and really changing the model. So hopefully the next director can only build on that and move it forward. So really, really appreciate what he did with the Paramount.
That, I think you hit the nail on the head. That, that is where we're, we're building on his foundation. He really did a lot of work. And I will tell you that we've, one of the things that he, he did is he contracted with a booking agent. We've retained that booking agent. The person that was booking the shows for the most part was working through Miles. He's on our, he's basically retained by us, even though Miles isn't here. So some of the shows, and he is extending the season. He's doing the stuff that needs to be done behind the scenes with social media, with ticket sales, with all the things that Miles was able to do as an executive director. We want more of an executive director going forward that is an ambassador to the community and somebody to come out and settle the paramount. And Miles did a great job of it. He built a great foundation. We're just looking forward to the next step and we're going to have a good one. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. I think you, I think Bristol will continue to be proud of it.
Okay, not any more questions. We'll move on to the next presentation. Rob, we certainly appreciate all your hard work that you're putting into this and hanging with it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm, yeah, by the way, I'm going to have to sign out. I do that. Again, I appreciate that. And again, thank you, John, for, for your help with, with us on our search committee. So appreciate it, but I'm going to have to sign out. Thank you then. Thanks again. Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll move on to Theater Bristol.
Thank you. And I'm going to get my slideshow up here.
Samantha, I didn't see you. Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you, Council, for having Theater Bristol here today included. And we're just thrilled to be able to continue to do some things in our community. Firstly, I just want to thank you so much for the preparation you gave us last year. We were able to accomplish the things that we wanted to do between that, our own income that we have been generating as well as some relief loan money. All of our building expenses for the roof, the heating, the demolition, our brickwork, everything that we had, we have paid off. So what that means is that most of that water damage that we were suffering from with the two buildings is now resolved, except for our little situation with what we call the paddle shop next door that's causing us some issue. But otherwise, we're able to now make important interior improvements for our theater and it's just wonderful to be in this place. And our programming has been able to creatively continue because of your support. And we even had our first audit in many, many years, which was very successful. So thank you so much for supporting the theater. We believe that Theater Bristol builds our community in many ways and the talent that we nurture, including those individuals who contribute back to our community, the venues we've shaped, like the historic Paramount and the art space. The groups we support are on Club Core volunteers, our youth service board, our campers, our cast and crews that become their own kind of support communities that go on and on. The audience, audiences that we draw, more than 14,000 visits a year. The buildings that we preserve, these two downtown historic buildings. And the economy, we like to say we feed the downtown restaurants, frequented not only by audiences, much like was just described with Paramount, but nearly daily by 20 to 200 cast crew and their families. And they are literally in here almost every day of the week for hours on end and frequenting the restaurants in the area. And of course, many who come for hotel shopping and even our own expenses for production marketing and supply purchases. We spend a lot of money on every show to create quality productions. And then the many partnerships we support, schools, theaters, individuals and businesses that come and borrow a lot of our resources that they wouldn't be able to find in other places. We had gone from having no school shows about 10 years ago to now we were having thousands of students come and see our productions. And many from rural counties around the area that wouldn't, don't otherwise have access to live performance. So they were making the trip here on buses and we were arranging our scheduled productions to meet their needs to get here. Also, just to Also, just to go into some of this now, as I mentioned, the talent that we nurture and who give back. Of course, you know how much Mary Beth Ranero has done for our community, David Browning, Rick McVeigh. This is what comes out of Theater Bristol. And those those future people who give back to our community are being developed every day here at Theater Bristol. And of course, the venue we are will always take credit. We love our Paramount. We love all the work that's going on over there. I've been over there. It's fantastic. And we will always take a little bit of credit for being involved with it being here today. And then, of course, our downtown presence of managing two buildings. And we feel like we do a good job with that, and we are good stewards of this and very dedicated to our downtown presence. In fact, one of the things we're looking at, we've been collecting a lot, are the two original marquees that have been on our building, two different ones over time by Ball Brothers, and what we can do to put our own vertical marquee up. So we've been getting a lot of information about how that might work, because we already have the structure in the building to support that. I mentioned our youth service board, and they represent many schools from both sides. And this past year, not the not in, yes, in 2020, right before COVID hit, and we took several of these students to our Arts Advocacy Day in Nashville. So we're nurturing students in the arts and being advocates for the arts. And also, this group was rep, pardon me, recognized by WCYB as five-star students as a group. And also, many of them have been recognized by Arts Alliance Magazine. And of course, the city council has recognized the theater for over many years, and we're grateful for that. I also wanted to mention that, you know, we know that we're a draw for families as they're making a choice for where they would like to settle. And they go, is there a vibrant community here? Is there a good library? Is there a community theater? And we're glad to be able to say that's the case. And during COVID, we just had a family move here from Utah, who's already gotten involved. And they brought with they bring with them their experience and work in theater. And the same with other ones that have come from Colorado and other places. A lot of communities, so we're involved in a lot of theater groups that represent, you know, the 7,000 community theaters across the country. So we stay apprised on what's going on, what's happening. We meet with them. And many communities say they wish they had a theater like we have. And that's really a testament to our community and the support that we have. These are just some of the shows over the last few years. Scrooge the Musical, you can see how big our casket. And you can probably, for every person there, imagine one more person that's on the crew and then family and friends, all those many people involved on a regular basis. Bringing shows like Les Mis and then it's like Rumpelstiltskin. Our shows like Les Mis and Wizard of Oz have been, you know, described as on par with barter quality. And we think that's really important. We make sure our shows are high quality. We started, since we started with kind of $0 in about 2012, over the years, we've advanced to now putting on a season of shows. And we're really proud of being able to do that. We haven't started selling season tickets. So we haven't been in the case where we've had to refund people. But that's what we've been working on advancing advancing toward with, because ticketing systems are expensive. That's something we wanted to make sure we made a good choice on. But we started putting this together in terms of seasons and doing things like Beauty and the Beast here at the Paramount. You can see there, we painted the floor, the musical Annie. Judy B. Jones, which had 22 sold-out performances. And then we continued to do that kind of work with the next season. And this, every year, we include now for it's been five years now, collaboration with Rivers Way, putting on different productions that are written specifically for the Rivers Way community. And you can see here, this is one of those productions where we're integrated with our local actors as well. We, by the way, that program, we just do it. We get no funding for that program whatsoever. And we sell our tickets at a minimal cost, $5 apiece. And every one of those performances sell out, but we can only do three, because it's very taxing on the community involved. This is some pictures from our production of Wizard of Oz. This is in the year last year that we were on the Paramount stage. We're very proud of this production that, again, people raved about the quality of it. This is the last bit of performances on the Paramount stage at the top there, you see Into the Woods. And then the Trial of the Big Bad Wolf and Miracle on 34th Street, which, again, people raved about. We bring kids in from Boys and Girls Club and Girls Inc. to see these shows. We partner with groups to make these happen. And then we were starting our 55th anniversary season, a big milestone, quite proud. So our story is a lot like the Paramount, a lot of recovery, a lot of building, full capacity, running at full tilt, and then the bottom drops out, right? And so we performed She Loves Me to sold-out audiences, a wonderful production, very high quality. We did our auditions for Jack and the Beanstalk. Here you see the parents and children meeting at one of the very first rehearsals for Jack and the Beanstalk. And then we told this cast that we are not going to have a show. Okay, that's emotional. Sorry. And so we also then announced our. I am really sorry, pardon. Our. Canceling Sound of Music. Or will say postponing To Kill a Mockingbird, Elf the Musical and Shakespeare's Twelfth Night. But we pivoted. We immediately got busy. And we wanted to, before we even announced what we weren't doing, we wanted to also say what we would be doing. So we created, we like to say that we keep drama on stage. We have a lot of teenagers involved with us. We have young children. We have people who are 85 years old and higher even. In our production of Andy, Annie, we had a nearly 90-year-old. We have, we announced what we wanted to do for them. So we came up with these programs. We call them Theater Bristol Scripted, our Quarantine Theater and Theater Bristol On Air. We came up with these programs along with lots of social media promotion, other activities that we did. We knew that these programs wouldn't necessarily raise money. We pay attention to what goes on, and when you're doing things online, it does not, it's not the same as selling tickets. We also started making masks, because we had the capacity to do it. There was a need. There was a shortage, if you'll recall. Elastic was, you could not buy elastic. It was hard to find. So we designed, based on some best practices or a mask, and we gave these away free of charge. And we didn't accept donations, and we had some nice donations from that. But basically, we spent our time making masks and unraveling the programs that we had already set up, canceling our shows, dealing with all the things we had, you know, would have to rent or, you know, arrange. All those specifics had to be unraveled. We also made masks for hospitals, hospital-grade masks, and we did all of that free of charge. In addition to our, what we call our KDOS series, the Keeping Drama on Stage of those programs, we also developed the 2020 Christmas scenes. And so we took our stage, we have our own stage, the art space, and we always use the Paramount stages for our big shows. But we created a stage in our downtown windows. So we have five window displays all the way down, and we created scenes of Christmas gifts of Santa. So it's live action with Santa and Mrs. Claus and the elves. We had a toy maker shop. We had a North Pole kind of winter wonderland scene. And we had people, lots of social media promotion. Modern Designs made a poster for us to put out, and we had some nice professional work done. And we broadcast, we bought speakers and we broadcast Christmas music outside during our hours of doing this. And we had lots of folks come downtown. We had kids write us, write Santa Christmas letters and send them to us. And we invited donations, and we did get a few, very, very little. But it was our pleasure to kind of keep some normalcy, some tradition that we felt like we lost so many traditions and customs during this time. We even had some professional Santas lend their time to these windows. It was really neat. I hope maybe some of you got to see it. We developed Theater Bristol On Air. We used to do, back in the days of Rick McVeigh, when he was here, and Mary Beth Ranero and Dottie Havlick, we did a program called Don't Touch That Dial. And we brought it back and called it Theater Bristol On Air, and we learned how to do podcasting. So we're on every major podcasting. So if you have a podcast channel, you can look these shows up. They're on there right now. The War of the Worlds, at Christmas Carol, the Habsburgs, and now we're in rehearsal for Flash Gordon, Conquers the Universe. And that's been a way for us to get together and keep the things intact that we do, like holding auditions, casting, having rehearsals, having directors, having stage management, a lot of the pieces that we could keep into play. So what we're doing right now is we're keeping drama on and off stage in our series. We're organizing and preparing unlike ever before. So a lot like the Paramount, we too have been kind of turning ourselves upside down with 50 years accumulated items and sorting through. We're even planning a yard sale to raise funds of things that are duplicate or kind of too fragile to be on stage. But what's also happening to us is a lot of people are cleaning out their homes, and they're calling us, and they're bringing a lot of things by here. So it's a lot of work managing and going through all that. We're increasing our capacity through conferences and trainings. In fact, I'm going to that, which is the American Association of Community Theaters Conference tomorrow, starting tomorrow in the Western time zone, so that I can attend it very late at night in the evenings and do other work during the day. We're attending a lot of webinars. We're studying what to do about the shuttered venue grant. Initially, that was not going to work for us at all, because it were only going to let it be used for people who pay their artists. And we spent a lot of time writing letters and doing advocacy, saying that should be changed. And it looks like that is the case. So we have gotten ourselves registered with sam.gov and all the steps it takes to be able to apply for that funding. But we recognize that we have a slimmer chance of getting that kind of funding as well, but we're working on it. Also, along with that, we didn't qualify for PPP because of the way we're set up right now. We're preparing to open with best practices in place. We're paying attention. Again, a lot of webinars. What are other theaters doing? How are they working? How do we open our space to be safe? We don't have a lot of staff. It takes staff to do this. We're also rehearsing and continuing to plan more radio programs, even once we open up. We're going to continue online events. We know that our reading groups that meet and read through scripts by age levels and interest levels or interest areas, we think that will continue. We're going to do outdoor rehearsals and performances, hopefully doing Twelfth Night very soon. And then we're going to mount shows kind of suddenly, like we used to do, rather than announce whole season. So then what we've done is taken our 2020 season that we didn't get to have, and we kind of ported it to 2021. But now we are have it set up for 2022, so that we can do. We've had everything approved to do Sound of Music, Elf the Musical, and these are major investment programs. I don't know if you have any idea, but to put on one show, most people would say it'd be about $40,000 to put on a show like Elf the Musical. We would pull off something like that for $20,000, and it would look like it's $100,000. So but we are moving our end date, that indoor stage season, we have planned all to 2022, so we could open at full capacity, because we need to be sure we can recoup our funds. So we had this great strategic plan. At this point, we were hoping in 2020, we were hoping to add a tech director, to have more staff to our situation here at Theater Bristol, to have paid staff levels so that we could bring in quality people to run our programs, to pay our directors, to pay our choreographers, to pay our stage managers, our music directors. We are still not doing that. So staffing is still a big issue here. We, like I mentioned, we need to be open to to audiences to be financially sustainable. The usual funds we would have gotten this year for different, you know, there are pressures on so many organizations, and that also affected us. We did not get United Company Foundation money like we always do. We are assured that we are a treasured client of United Company Foundation, as they put it, and that hopefully we'll get some money this year, but we did not get that money last year, because they had other priorities. We will not be getting Rhythm and Roots money this year as they cut back. Our own gala events were cut back. We didn't even get to have them at all. And we did not qualify for PPP. And just like you heard about the Paramount, we don't have any ticket sales. We have nothing. We're doing shows, like I said, but individuals buy tickets more than they donate, as much as we ask. And I know they care, but it's also our, it's our, it's our base of who we're reaching out to. The prime, you know, the majority of those don't have the funds to give. They'll give time all day long. So when you look at what kind of organization we are, if you look at all the in-kind contributions and time put in, we estimate that we're basically a $300,000 organization, running off $30,000. So we need assistance for utilities, insurance, our web hosting, building maintenance fees, our registrations that we have to have royalties, marketing, and the cost of safely opening. And we hope that the city will continue to invest in us and help it strengthen Theater Bristol. We think that in many cities, they support their community theater, and we're grateful for the support that you have given to us. We know that there are some things we have been fortunate in. We have not had to refund people tickets, and we did not have to lay anybody off. That was a blessing that we did not have to do that. I want to, just the the last little bit I want to say is that we we have a lot of, you know, there's a lot of data that we try to contribute to, to the collective data efforts of, say, the Tennessee Arts Commission and who they contract to do their work as well. And we know that what we do downtown brings people downtown. We know that it's a contribute, it's a tremendous generating, generation of income or, you know, spending in our downtown and activity in our downtown. We know that because it happens in communities all across the country. And we do the same inputs that get the same results. So we don't have a lot of our own data, but we're working on that. That is a goal that we have. It's just that we're very stretched in our capacity, because we don't have a lot of staff either. But we we are working to build our capacity to gather more data. We do surveys to try to learn what people do. We ask those questions specifically about what do they do when they come downtown? Did they stay at a hotel? They eat at a restaurant? So working, we constantly are working to build that capacity. We are a great nonprofit, a 2020 top-rated nonprofit. We're a platinum, which is the highest level of Guide Star rating. As I mentioned, our audit was successful, thanks to the support from the city. When the last four years, each year, we have had an Arts Alliance, the Mountain Empire, awardee each year that's involved with our organization, two board members, executive director, and one of our major donors who we nominated. Our, as I mentioned about our youth, they've gotten many spotlight features. We feel like we're contributing in so many ways to our community. And we're asking that if you could consider an appropriation, last year you gave us $20,000. We would love if it would be that amount. If it's $15,000, we will still be super grateful. So that's that's your community theater, and thank you so much for letting me present today and all you do for us.
Okay, question from counsel.
Samantha, I have a quick question. How much would you estimate that y'all spend on marketing in a non-COVID year?
In a non-COVID year? Probably about $6,000, I would say. We get a lot of free, so that's 6,000. You know, we get preferred rates on our billboards with WTS, anything that they give us that we pay for, we get maybe double, triple the amount. I mean, the low for everyone we work with, we always try to be a good steward and buy some ads. And then we are constantly always trading and negotiating and getting extra for that. But we do want to, we do spend, because we think it's important to support our community.
Great. Thank you.
I will. Here's a good example. Modern Designs, they make all of our window clings for us at no cost. But we buy lots and lots of t-shirts and other items from them on a regular basis. So we just kind of have this mutual process.
I'll just, I'll add this briefly. When I first came to Bristol 38 years ago, I couldn't find a job. And my husband and I were newlyweds, and our finances reflected that. And I went to Theater Bristol, I know how to sew, and Kathy DiCaterina hired me on a show-by-show basis to make the all of the costumes for Theater Bristol at that point in time. And it was a great way for me, as someone who is originally from Bristol, to become integrated and very involved in the community. So y'all's work has touched a lot of people along the way, myself included. And I appreciate everything that y'all are doing very much. Thank you.
That reminds me that, you know, one of the things we often say we do here is we run a job skill training program, basically. We have volunteers constantly come in and we, every curtain speech, I say this, you know, if you know how to do something, come. We'd love your help, but if you don't know, we'll teach you, and we do. And so as a consequence, I'm constantly doing recommend, job recommendations all the time. So we help people kind of bridge a gap, you know, in their life, if they need a little help. And then on top of that, we know that we also provide a lot of, you know, emotional support to people when they're having challenges. We help build confidence. In fact, I did a presentation for YW Cares on how to build confidence and how theater is a big part of that.
Samantha, what do you think the total net loss is for the theater this past year with the expenses of the building and of having zero income coming in?
It's it's more than $100,000, I would say. It makes me want to say it's all, you know, it really has been rough. I watched months go by and the cash. I watched months go by and the cash flow is just not there. And we are applying for grants. We apply on a regular basis and we will keep doing that. And as I mentioned, we'll do the shuttered venue. We did get another offer from the idle program to add more to our loan amount, but I don't feel like we should take that on. But it's something for the board to discuss. We haven't discussed it yet. We just got that email.
Samantha, I have another quick question. My pragmatic mind is running. What would you estimate or do you have a figure as to self-revenues for ticket sales?
For what? It cut out right before you said ticket sales.
Sales tax revenues or ticket sales or merchandise? What is, what is the return on any investment through sales tax revenues?
I don't know.
That would be something good to know.
I, I don't.
They, they don't charge
I don't.
tax on their ticket.
Okay, right, because y'all are a nonprofit.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
We have sales tax exemption.
Right.
That's why.
My, my mistake, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I was trying to think if there's something I was missing. Okay.
I'll just jump in with saying, I think that the theater really is still meeting the intent and the mission that Catherine DeCaterina had when she first began to build those self, that self-esteem and confidence and give particularly young people opportunities. And I'll also say over the years, we've seen our local high schools being able to offer less in drama. And that's for different reasons. So it really provides a great, great service to the talented young people that we have that don't have as many opportunities to, to do live theater. And that includes crew, et cetera, and not just being out there on stage, but everything else that's involved. So, and I think it also contributes, we like to talk about and feel that we're a good place for families. And certainly Theater Bristol lives in breathe step all the time. So, thank you. And I think if we looked at what they spend on payroll, people would be shocked for how tiny and little that is. It's done primarily through folks donating their time. So.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I guess. So everyone, I'm on the board and been on the board at Theater Bristol for quite some time. And it really is, people do not understand of the amount of time that is donated to put these shows on. And, you know, the directors, everyone else, they're not getting paid. But it's something that is bringing people to our downtown. They're coming, they're spending money. So I think it is a, something for, it's a great thing for our community. But thank you for all you do, Samantha.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's many, many young people that's, it's been through that program down there over the years, working. You help them on shows and a lot of adults as well. I know one of my sons just spent several years down there. And if you can imagine this, I was down there one day, I was washing in front of that building on an early Saturday morning, running the power washer and waking up people in the community, so.
We have the power washer right out here in front. If you want to come by, we're, we're ready for it to get warm enough.
I'll do that. I'll come back downhill. So yeah, we appreciate all you do and it is a great service for our community.
We just feel like we can really grow, like there's so much we can do. People have so many ideas and we're a place that we can say, yeah, we can make your idea happen. And so we, we just really hope for the chance to get through this COVID situation because it really is a setback for us.
Okay, anything else, anyone?
Okay, I guess with that, that wraps up presentations. Any other council comments?
Just want to thank everybody for presenting and sharing information and being on the hot seat with questions, et cetera. So thank y'all.
I would echo, thank you to everybody and that's presented. I mean, it's a great job. It's, 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 it's certainly outstanding that we have all of these resources in our community. I will say, as I was listening to all the presentations, I couldn't help but jot down, you know, commonalities between many of them. I think that the United Way is, is dealing with certain issues that perhaps others are not. So I'm going to put them over here for just a minute. But if, if we were listening to, as we went through, there's tourism, there's marketing. There was a lot of talk indirectly about entrepreneurialism. There was talk about education. There was talk about events. There was talk about return on investment, new initiatives. Just a lot of things that, that we heard in each of the presentations. And so it, it, it set my mind to thinking of one thing that we had, had hoped would, would come out over the past few years is an, an effort of integration and collaboration between different entities. And so as we go through this, I would like for us to maybe consider how we could encourage even further that integration of marketing of cross collaboration with initiatives, maybe downtown. How there could be the cross pollination of education and, and marketing. I, I just, I think that we're, we're at a point where it would at least be worth the conversation as to how we could think outside of the box to set aside the monies that, that could help each of these organizations with their marketing, with their different initiatives, with their entrepreneur and education and on and on and on. And how it could create more collaboration and, and at the same time make each event even more developed and more comprehensive. So that's just where my mind is going right now in regard to some of this is how can we, rather than taking each one in isolation? Because several of them have very similar needs. And could we begin to talk about? And through our tourism marketing, you know, our, our new entity that will be forming, could we include revenues there that there could be a collaborative act of different organizations? To be allocated money from such funding over a period of time? Let's say that there was a new initiative like, I don't know, a wine walk or something downtown. You know, would it benefit to have it so that there was an event at the museum? The Believe in Bristol would be ongoing. There could be something maybe at the Paramount. There could be something maybe at Theater Bristol. From those that have talked with us today to have more or less a community chest of collaboration where all of these entities work together in some of their initiatives. And I'm just putting that out there for everybody to chew on over the next little bit. I don't know if, I think that's a great thing or not. It's just something that other communities have done and would, would get us to that point of collaboration. Realizing that they all have their own needs, but it would be, they would be able to take those revenues that they would normally put into their budget for those specific items that through collaboration, perhaps we could get an even bigger return on investment. So just something to think about. Not really proposing anything, just, just thinking out loud.
Well, I think it kind of goes back, I, I can speak on behalf of, with the Paramount and Theater Bristol of somewhat three years ago, I guess, Samantha, that we had a meeting with the Paramount. The Paramount was struggling and Theater Bristol was struggling. We came together, were able to work out a deal as far as doing the shows at the Paramount where we could actually do it at Theater Bristol and sharing the revenues of the shows. And it's been a great relationship. I hope that continues on, but I think part of that, you know, that type of collaboration, I think is works really well, so.
One of the things that I, I kind of feel that Theater Bristol and Paramount are unique is, is that they, they take risks on certain events. I know the Paramount came to us one time and said, you know, can you backstop and help us with risks that we may take for a major event? Which helps all entities within the city, not only restaurants, but potentially hotels as well. So I think as we move forward, supporting of the arts, you know, the Paramount and Theater Bristol are two entities that can really work in that direction. And, and maybe we need to be thinking along the lines of in support of starter money or backup money in case an event doesn't do very well, something like that. I know, I know the Paramount has wanted to have some larger events, but feel that they need, you know, money to back them up in case something doesn't do very well. And if something does really well, that boosts their future, their future shows and acts. So I think as, as we move forward, we need to keep that in mind, especially when it comes to the arts. Several of our entities rely on large donations. And, you know, it's tough, if I understood correctly, Theater Bristol has a difficult time, had a difficult time this past year with donations. And I think the Paramount probably had a lot of donations to go towards their infrastructure and the building, but with absolutely no revenues coming in from their, you know, from their shows and acts. I think it puts them in particular in a difficult circumstance. All of our nonprofit entities are in difficult circumstances, along with the city and all of our businesses. But I appreciate the fact that they're hanging in there with basically no revenues to move forward. And I think that's unique amongst those two entities, the Paramount and Theater Bristol. So I appreciate everything that they, they have endured over the last year. And keep in mind, those revenues help Bristol, you know, all the way around in multiple business segments. Also too, I just wanted to reiterate what Rob said about the restaurant space. You know, if we, if we have, you know, restaurant revenues coming in, that's going to be, you know, revenues that come in, you know, the tax revenues that come into the city, not only the city, but into the county, which in turn helps our school system, so on and so on. State, it's a state all the way around. So just want to throw that in there as we discuss further, you know, donations to our nonprofits going forward.
And so if I understand correctly, Bill, right now, we currently, I know you were waiting on the ask from the Paramount, but it's about $190,000 to $200,000 of those that presented today. Is that correct? You're muted, Bill.
Yes, ma'am. Your math, your math is correct.
So I look forward to talking more. This is a three hour, almost a three hour meeting that I think we can do some more discussing. I also think that as we discuss, we need to be real careful that we as council don't go to in directions that, that may not, where we don't really know what we're talking about. And it needs more exploration and more learning on everybody's part for what different models might look at like. And I'm, I'm headed out, so thanks to everybody.
Go, go, go ahead, counsel.
Bill, I would just say that I'll reiterate my point that I think that we're in a very unusual situation. I would not propose at all to micromanage any of these organizations, but to make the funding available in such a way that they would be integrated and working with one another. And, and to Margaret's point, yes, of course, it deserves further exploration, but I think we have to start somewhere. We have done things a certain way for many, many years. And it may be that we continue because that is our best option. But it may be that we have a great opportunity in front of us to take a look at how we're doing things and to reconsider, not in micromanaging any, any entity, but in making funds available. So, and that they can collaboratively determine how they would like to use those in a joint effort towards, towards marketing and other new initiatives. So that was my only point.
I think as, as far as further council discussion, unless council wants to do this differently, and certainly that's a prerogative of council, what staff would do is, is bring this issue to you during our budget work session as we have in years past. We will provide you historical information regarding previous contributions that council has made. And then, then a summary of the, of the respective asks by the organizations. And then, and then council will, will move forward with discussion, the issue at that time.
Bill, when we all get together for these discussions, of course, our tourism, economic development aspect will be a part of that conversation. And so I guess what, what I would like, and of course, it's the will of council, but there will have to be more than just myself to ask for. There to be any type of conversation about this. So if there are two others out there, you know, jump on in. But how we could make as a part of the tourism marketing a fund, so to speak, that would speak directly to the marketing of our nonprofits? And how there could be those monies put into effect for collaboration? It's just thought. But, and, and if nobody else is interested in that, then, then I'm good. I just, I just wanted to put that out there. They're all working together anyway, and I just want to see if there, if there was any merit to that.
I, I don't know if it's okay for me to speak on this, but what you are talking about resonates very highly with me because at Theater Bristol, we, there are various tourism groups like Tennessee Tourism, and it costs a lot of money to join those. And we can't afford it. And as a result, Theater Bristol is not even listed. So we lose out and we can't afford that. So what you're talking about to me sounds very exciting. If there's a way that we can be included, if it's already sending money behind it, why, why should we pay a membership fee on top of it as a nonprofit that's already trying to give back? That's all we're trying to do in the first place. So that, I just wanted to share that. We actually joined the chamber for the first time this year, hoping that the exposure will help us get new board members. And we, we've added two board members, but not because of the chamber membership. But we are hoping that the, the marketing aspect of that will help the theater grow because we recognize there are things we need to do to kind of keep leveling up. But to join every tourism, you know, program in the community is just not tenable for us. So I, I think it's interesting. So I just wanted to share that.
I guess, I'm muted. Oh, no. I guess I'm just understanding exactly where you're coming from on this league of, I mean, I, I don't know either way. Cause I really, I'm not sure of of what the ask is as far as, are you talking about a taking a certain portion of the tourism monies and using it for advertising collaborator with everyone? Or?
Well, I think we would be doing that anyway. It would be for that board to decide exactly how they do it. What I'm talking about is actually a different tranche of money that would be made available to all of those in a like sector that would, for marketing dollars. So that marketing dollars aren't just spent on a one and done, but that, let's say that the BCM wants to market something in specific and that there can be a collaboration of those marketing dollars like a kiosk. Like at the airport. I know at one point in time, there was an ask that, that there be a, you know, that, that, who wanted to participate in the kiosk at the airport? And it was expensive. And it might be that it's done collaboratively through the different, the different arts sector. It might be that, that there's an article that's being written specifically. You know, we haven't waited We haven't waded into the waters. And again, not to micromanage, it's an issue for the, the, the new board to be established. But say you did, you, you landed an article with Southern Living. Most of those articles are paid for. Very few of them are just out of the goodness of their hearts. And so, you know, that's a situation where maybe no one entity has the revenues to do something like that. But the combined revenues would make it possible that they lift all ships rather than tranching that money out into different pots along the way, that there's this one pot that everybody works through to lift, for the bay to lift all ships. And it's, it's just, it's just a different thought. I'm not married to it. I'm not going to throw myself on a sword over it. But I'd really like for us to think about how we can leverage every dollar uh, out there. And so where our opportunity ends is where all of these entities begin. Our opportunity is how we delegate these revenues that we're suggesting to be spent. Do we put, do we add a, a, an amount of money to what we're going to spend in tourism? Do we add that? Does that become part of the tourism? But yet we set aside a specific amount of money that's to be used for collaborative marketing and initiatives.
Right.
I'm just saying, you know, I know everybody has their needs, but the need, but what we hear over and over again is that there are marketing needs, there are initiative needs. Is there a duplication of services that we can mitigate by setting up a fund for collaborative marketing and, and ongoing initiatives? And the United Way is not really included in that because they're their own entity. And we know that their needs are different than some of these other needs. It's just a thought.
Yeah, I think once we get that new board established, I, I think those are some good conversations to be had. Uh, I'll say one thing real quick and I'll, and I'll shut up and, and adjourn this. No one else has got anything to say. You know, I, I've been directly involved with a nonprofit for, for a lot of years. And being a nonprofit, it's tough. And you have to be very creative. You put a lot of hours in there. Uh, myself and our board, you know, no one is paid. And uh, we find ways to give back the whole lot to the communities. So it is, it is a tough road. So I commend everyone that works at that arena and uh, we share one of the best. And uh, I think we're going to have a good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We call this meeting adjourned.